She's ready.
I don't think that light works.
That light doesn't work. Everyone on the phone, we're at 7:45, sunshine notice adequate?
Adequate notice to this meeting and hearing has been provided by publication in the home news, Tribune. Can I ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance.
To the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every single justice.
Roll call.
Mr. Zangara?
Here.
Mr. Malanson? Ms. Hutchinson?
Here.
Ms. Malbone?
Here.
Mr. Rubenstein? Mr. Vigna?
Here.
Mr. Vito? Ms. Vito, excuse me. Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Ms. DeCandia?
Here.
Okay, everyone in their, so just a quick note. No new testimony will be heard after 10:00 PM. We'll do our best to move this meeting along. Minutes, everyone should have the May 12th and May 21st minutes in their packet. There's no questions or changes. Do a motion to adopt the May 12th minutes? Need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt the May 12th.
May 13th, right? Is it May 13th?
It says May 13th.
Okay.
I'm confused.
Over here it says May 13th.
Yeah, I'm not sure which it is.
That's why.
Are the minutes for May 12th or 13th?
I think it's May 13th and May 21st.
Yeah, okay.
So, May 13th?
I make a motion, will you approve the minutes?
Your second.
Second, excuse me, second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also, everyone should have the May 21st minutes in their packet. Again, if there's no questions, a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. Memorializations, we have Kaplan, Hidden Lake Town Center, 2-4-5 Town Center Drive, site plan permitted, accessory use. I believe everything is in good order now, right, Mr. Vigna?
Yes.
With the pleasure of the board, a motion to adopt and approve this permitted site, this site plan?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
We need to make sure the motion to move in second were people who were present at that meeting?
Okay.
Just who made the motion to approve?
Mary.
Mary, okay. And you were at that meeting, right, Mary? I apologize.
I second.
She was.
Yes. And who made the second?
I'll second, Malbone.
She was at that meeting also.
So, it's a roll call on memorialization, right?
Roll call.
Mr. Zangara?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Ms. Malbone?
Yes.
Mr. Vigna?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. DeCandia?
Yes.
Was Mr. Brooks present at that meeting when we approved Kaplan? We're only taking, we're only calling roll on people who actually were present when we approved that.
No, I was not present.
I don't, I don't think Mr. Brooks was.
I was not present.
Right.
All right. Moving right along, our first new application of the evening. It's 2689 Pioli Properties LLC, 360 Georges Road, it's a minor subdivision, create two separate lots with two separate uses. Mr. Stahl, counselor?
Yeah, I'm just reading from my hand.
Floor yours. Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a word, it's a pleasure to be here, Mr. Watson, Ms. Larkin. This is the matter of Pioli Properties LLC. It is a, I was gonna say strange, but it's not strange. It's on Georges Road, you all remember, those of you who were born and raised here, used to be the string factory, and then there also was a second use. It's approved back in 2011, 2012. Yes, 2011, 2012, as a, I have used variance and thereafter a site plan approval. It has been there, successful location. My clients who are here but are not going to testify unless we need them, I have two eminent individuals who will take their place. We're looking for a minor subdivision, no changes, no construction on the property. We have cross-access, cross-easement agreements. Mr. Lane from Menlo Engineering will be my first witness, who will describe the project. And I think the only outside agencies, well, will need maybe county, and I think the DOT because of the curb cuts on the state highway. Some of you, I would assume everyone knows, but Georges Road is a state highway, number 26, and therefore we have to get a approval from the state of New Jersey. There is a letter of no interest from Mr. Dominguez from the city of New Brunswick, since the subdivision really has no impact on New Brunswick. I have provided for notice both for 200 feet from north Brunswick location and 200 feet from the New Brunswick location. The city of New Brunswick has also, as required by MLUL, have been notified. Ms. Larkin, I assume we have jurisdiction and the notices were properly served? Oh, I'm sorry, counselor or Mr. Vigna?
Why don't you first put your name on the record, please? I don't think you did.
You know, I-
I don't know you.
Uh, I, my name is James Stahl, S-T-A-H-L. I'm a country lawyer from Finnegan's Lane, the firm is Boris Golden Foley, Vignolo Hyman Stahl, and I come here so we can get a good laugh at my expense. So, I have two witnesses, Mr. Lane from Menlo Engineering, or Site Engineering, and then the esteemed Mr. John Takina, T-A-K-I-N-A, who is my professional planner, and go to a gentleman who will testify as to the bulk variances which are created by the minor subdivision. So, I don't have to waste your time any further. May I call Mr. Lane, please?
Mr. Stahl, did you ask me a question with regard to jurisdiction? Did you ask a question regarding jurisdiction?
You're the boss, you ask as many questions as you want.
He said, "Did you ask a question about jurisdiction?" He asked.
My hearing, I, honestly, I-
We couldn't hear you at first because the mic was down.
We have jurisdiction to hear the case, and we have jurisdiction so long as, what I understand, there is nothing going on on the piece of property in New Brunswick, you're not-
Yes, that is correct.
You're not cutting the subdivision line through there, and I understand if that's the case, then New Brunswick has no interest-
That's correct.
-in our piece of property. If it's not that, then we have another issue.
Thank you. Mr. Lane, why don't you come over here, please? And be sworn in?
Could you raise your right hand, please, sir? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth?
Yes.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
William Lane, L-A-N-E.
Mr. Lane, I'll be real fast, by whom are you presently employed? Mr. Takina's gonna give you a microphone so you can sing and dance.
Excuse me, do you want to use the table like we usually do?
I'm gonna go sit down as soon as I finish with him. You want us both sitting over there? We can do-
Yeah, for some reason the mic, we were having trouble with the mic. It wasn't clear as you were talking.
Want that off?
Yeah.
Do we have this channel?
Yes.
With the red line?
Yes.
Okay.
Handing out the exhibit is Mr. Takina, I don't think we have to mark that, counselor, since it is replicated in the application package. If you want, I can call it A-1 with today's date, since it is, it has a red line in it to indicate-
I'd like to mark it A-1, counselor.
A-1.
The one we have does not, it's not red, so I'm gonna mark this A-1, which is a Menlo Engineering-
And for the record, it's entitled Pioli Properties LLC, Minor Subdivision Plan, and it was prepared by Menlo Engineering.
Thank you.
Bill, I just want to get you qualified. You are a, an engineer employed by Menlo Engineering, is that correct?
Yes.
And your license is still in full force and effect as a civil engineer, is that correct?
Yes.
And you have appeared before this board more times than you and I can recall, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, if we can qualify him?
We'll accept as an expert witness.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Lane, you know I don't do a Q and A, I may interrupt you if I think there's a question, but I'd like you now to advise this board as to the project, including some of the questions raised by Mr. Watson and some of the other agencies in connection with shared sanitary, stormwater management, and the driveway access.
Okay, the applicant is proposing to separate the property into two parcels. The lot four will be broken up with lot 4.01, which will be on the southern section, that will consist of 1.71 acres, that'll have the Butcher 360 Restaurant building on lot, there will be 79 parking spaces.
I don't know if it's a system tonight, or, I have a little bit of a cold, but could you slow it down a little bit? I'm having trouble understanding everything, I apologize. It's not, it's not just me, so I know it's not me, so maybe it's our sound system, you can just speak a little more slowly.
Okay.
I had trouble, we had trouble understanding both of you.
Okay. And just before he starts again, as I indicated, my client is here, but I, I don't see any need, if the board has questions, I can bring them up. The reason for the subdivision is as indicated in the application package and the narrative which was delivered, and that is that my clients wish to have the ability in the future to either finance the parcels separately at some point in time, or lease one of the parcels, or sell one. I will represent on the record at this time that there are no contracts for the sale of the property, and the first priority of my clients would be to lease the uses and/or obtain financing on one or both parcels. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, the parcel is 3.5 acres. What the applicant's looking to do is split into two, two sections. Lot 4.01, which will be the southern lot, that'll consist of 1.71 acres, that'll have the Butcher 360 Restaurant building on it. There will also be 79 existing parking spaces that will still remain there. With the subdivision line, there'll be several variances with that. Lot area, where three acres is required, we're providing 1.71. The lot width, which is 350s required, we're providing 274. Lot depth, 350s required, we're proposing 289. And the minimum side yard, where 40s required, we're proposing 27.7. On both side yards where 80s required, we're proposing 63.9. Also, the number of parking spaces that will require variance, where 103s required, and we're proposing 79. On the other lot, which we're calling 4.02, that'll be 1.79 acres, and that includes the .28 acre lot that's on New Brunswick. On that lot, we'll have the three-story mixed-use building, which used to be the old Music String Factory. That'll remain on that lot. This, the lot will also have 61 parking spaces which exist. With that lot being created, there's several variances also with that one. The lot area, which is required three acres, the lot will have 1.79. The lot width is required 350, we're providing 257. On minimum both side yard setbacks, 80s required, 57 is proposed. There is an existing side yard variance which is, was granted years ago from the Music String Factory next to the Squibb lot. But in additional, the number of parking spaces where 86 is required, 61 is proposed. Now, the subdivision line was pretty much created where the stream is, because the stream pretty much separates the two parcels as is today. As far as utilities, they all remain as they are, each building, because again, they're separated by the stream, have their own water and sewer.
Excuse me, do you have a, do you have a copy of the map to put up for the, for the public or anybody who's here to say?
We have a larger one, yeah.
I mean, you know, I don't understand how anybody from the public could possibly be listening to this and have any idea what's going on without, without having a map up.
John, let's put that right in the middle, I think that'll, because the board has their own, if that's all right, with Mr. Vigna.
So, can I have a place to follow?
Yeah, we'll just put it over in that, in that corner and put it out this way. Jim, why don't you use that microphone too? I think it's that microphone you're using, maybe you guys could share that same microphone?
Good?
Yeah, when, whenever.
Plus, he was too close to it.
Is there another one?
Yeah, whoever's talking, use that mic, because the other mic wasn't working, or isn't, isn't clear. I'd say use the handheld mic, because I wasn't understanding well with the other mic.
Okay, we're ready? Go ahead.
I'm good.
Well, I think that, I think that Mr. Vigna wanted you to explain briefly again, using the big board, so anyone in the audience would understand how you described the subdivision.
Yeah, the, the red line, as shown, that's the subdivision line. The southern portion will have the Butcher 360 Building on it, that's 1.71 acres. To the north, it's a long, lengthy lot, that will have 1.79 acres, and that will house the Music String Factory building, which is now a mixed-use building.
Can you point out where Georges Road is on that map?
Yes.
For anybody from the public or anybody else who's here?
Yeah, based on our map, it's to the left, which is to the west, Georges Road runs north to south on this property.
Right.
And then you have Squibb to the north.
I just have a question about the utilities. Your last comment, you said that they have separate water and sewer to each site?
Yeah, the Butcher 360 goes directly out to Georges Road, same thing with the Music String Factory. They, there's, the site is separated by the stream, so they have to have their own individual water and sewer lines out to the road.
And lighting systems, are they separate as well?
Yes. The only connection physically is there's a driveway in the rear, and then there's a pedestrian bridge, and that's staying as is.
And what is the issue, if any, with regard to the DOT approval?
We, just a few weeks ago, we got deemed complete, so we're in the middle of the review, but we've been deemed complete, so probably a few more months before we get their approval.
Now, this, this application, this application was approved by the Board of Adjustment about, what, 14, 15 years ago, Jim, right? So, because it was a used variance, but all the, all the board members here aren't necessarily familiar with it. So, the, the, the building towards the North Brunswick border is 20, we just, is 24 apartments up above with some retail down below, and the other building, what's in the other building? Is it, are there multiple uses in the other building? Multiple retail uses, one restaurant, two restaurants? What's in the other building?
Bill, you have that, you mean the string, the former string building?
The string building is several, is a number of small retail establishments on the ground floor, and then I think 24 apartments above. The other building, who is in, what is in the other building? And nobody, if you have somebody from the owner who wants to comment, but they can't be commenting from the audience. So, I'm asking, what, what uses are in the other building?
Well, then my planner, let John describe that when he gets up, John Takina.
Okay. John's a good planner. And the, 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 the presentation indicated that there's a connection, there's a connection. Can you point out where the connection is on the map for the members of the public? The many members that are public, I'm teasing, who are watching now, but can you please point it out for this? This application is new to this board, this isn't, you're not before a zoning board that is very familiar with this. Where is the connection between, between the two uses?
There's a, there's a driveway connection at the rear of the property.
Right.
So, you have to drive to the rear of each lot to have the driveway connection. There's a pedestrian bridge roughly mid, midway of the, of the property over the stream, but that's only for pedestrian use.
Right. And can you talk about, you know, as the, as the engineer in the job, can you talk about what happens with, to the, the property during events of heavy rain? You know, what, there's parking in front of the, the building that's got the residential units in it right now. Are those parking spaces accessible or usable during periods of heavy rain?
If, if it, if it does have torrential rain, there is a possibility, and we show the flood elevation on here, that parking lot could take on water.
Could take on water?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if, if it can't get through the culvert that crosses the road-
I'm sorry, what was that?
The culvert, if the water can't get through the culvert, then it will back up, and it could potentially back up into the parking lot.
Because I, I've seen on several occasions when, when the area in front of those residential uses were, those parking spaces appeared to be underwater, which is why I think the connection to the rear is, is critical, you know, residents. It seems to me that in times of heavy rain, that the residents residing in the old musical string instrument need to be able to park up above. I'm just trying to establish, I know you're gonna, you're talking about there's gonna be easements, but the fact that matters appears to me that on, I'm not gonna say a regular basis, but on a regular basis, there's heavy rain, that, that residents need to park in the upper parking lot. Is that correct? Or if you can say you don't know, if you don't know?
I mean, I don't, I don't know if-
All right, so is that another question you want to say for-
No, because, no, this is an existing approval, let's, let's come back, I'm giving you two things. As I'm reviewing Mr. Profaci's report to me, there's a three-story mixed-use building located at 120 Georges Road, which was formerly the National Music String Company, includes 24 residential apartment units on upper floors and 8,211 square feet of specialty retail and office on the ground floor. The second building is a two-story commercial building located at 360 Georges Road, comprising approximately 10,469 square feet of retail space, comma, a 3,170 square foot restaurant, and a 3,275 square foot mezzanine for storage and restaurant retail seating. So, those are the two uses that are there right now. Now, you raised an issue that was raised, I think, by, by Mr. Watson, and certainly from somebody else, I think Officer Public Works. We're not changing any of the dynamics of the property. If there are storm drainage issues, then that can be a condition, if you want to place it on the resolution, to resolve it. Now, that's not something, Bill, you're not familiar with any flooding, am I correct?
No.
So, I can't ask him how he would address flooding or overflow, since he's not aware of it, although it was in some reports, and this, this is what's been there and what has been approved.
Maybe we should just wait until the next rainstorm.
I'm sorry?
Maybe we'll wait until that rainstorm comes by and we'll all become aware of it.
Well, I don't think we have to do that.
Look, Mr. Stahl, look, I'm, I'm not trying to make this difficult, the presentation, you didn't have a map up, the presentation, you talked about variances, you didn't point anything out, and this board is unfamiliar with this application, other than Jim Watson giving a general overlay. So, the bottom line is, we know you're not proposing any new buildings, but that doesn't mean you don't need to go through and make a, a presentation and establish things and lay things out and talk about the connection and the fact that in heavy rain events, there are areas in, in North Brunswick that flood, roads that get closed in heavy rain events, and I know, I believe that that's a problem for, for the, the parking by the residential portion. So, just so we have a feel for what's going on, I understand there's gonna be a bunch of easements to guarantee it, but you still need to make the presentation and lay it out, that's all I'm saying. Trying to establish, you know, if you want to, maybe, maybe you need to put your planner on right now, maybe he can address some of these things.
Well, no, I don't think the planner, John is gonna testify as to the bulk variances, those that are existing-
Right.
-and those that are created by the subdivision itself. I don't think he's equipped, although he's equipped, but he's, he's not prepared tonight to discuss a stormwater, you know, drainage. I don't know whether or not the board wants a separate report and for us to complete our testimony and submit a report.
I'm not talking, I'm not talking about a separate report, the zoning board approved the drainage before, but the two, the two unit, the two uses are related, and they function together, and you're gonna divide them now, so we just want to make sure that everything's in place, we want to understand how it works. It doesn't mean because you just draw on a line that you don't, not make a presentation.
All right, let Bill-
Just to let you know, because I was involved with the original application, we did go to the DEP to flood hazard based on the stream, so the one thing we did have to do is we had to raise the finished floor of the Music String Factory, so we went through the whole, the rules and regulations, of course, they change now, but from back then. The parking lot, they knew it did flood, but didn't flood only to a certain degree, which was enough for people to get in and out. Now, things have changed, but that was the permit we got back then, and that was everything in place and everything was approved by the DEP for, you know, the stream corridor.
And Bill, if I can, the, the park, the variances, especially those with the parking, are those addressed by shared parking and cross-parking and access?
Yeah, that was part of our reasoning from back when we got the variances for the overall site. Because the parking, the parking needs a variance, whether it's for the overall or individual lots.
There's no impediment to either site using parking from the other?
Correct.
Now, is there anything else you have, and I respect Mr. Vigna's response and his concern, I mean that, is there anything else you can tell the board or the public with regard to the application that was produced or presented or developed at the initial application where you were involved as the site engineer?
We pretty much covered it, I mean, we have a driveway that comes in the front, if, again, if this becomes inundated and can't have access out the rear, the property to the south with the, with the Butcher 360 is, that is higher ground, so they could come up through the driveway out here and exit further up Georges Road, because as you go down Georges Road, it does dip down, and right in front of the property is where that crossing is in the low spot in the road. But, like I said, when we designed this way back when, again, we, we got all our approvals on the, on the, on the storm sewer with the DEP, we had a, you know, we cleaned up the stream. I know one thing that the, that, I know when they were under construction, there was a lot of issues with the crossing, because they, they came and cleaned it out, and that made things a lot better. Now, that was, you know, 15 years ago, but like I said, I haven't monitored it, but I haven't heard anything about being that bad of flooding in the parking lot.
Mr. Stahl, do you know if, if the residents who are leasing in the residential units, in their lease, just, in their lease, does it let them know that in certain events, that parking lot might flood and they, and they'll, they'll have to park up above? Or can park, or will have to, you know?
You are?
Mr. Takina does have the answer to that one, Mr. Vigna.
Yeah.
There's a, yeah, Vigna, you will be sworn, but just so we're in sync, what is there there that-
Why don't you wait until John has sworn?
Yeah, let's finish this, this witness that we wanted, John. If there was something, I mean, if you were doing this, if you were starting over to that, is there anything that you would recommend?
What would you do differently? If, if there was a possibility that it maybe?
Well, I mean, the DEP rules are different, so the flood elevations are higher, so the building would have to come up, the parking lot would have to come up, and then you're looking at net fill, so it would be a whole different ballgame out there.
That it did years ago, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's, so there's no magic wand you can wave and say, hey, if we just did this, with this and that, we can probably mediate some of the-
Yeah, again, back then, we adhere to the rules and the regs, and that's what we got our approval on. Again, like I said, as, as time goes on, they keep changing them, and the elevations keep coming up.
Right.
Of course, everyone keeps thinking that there's bigger, and, and there has been over time, you know, we saw also what happened-
You're asking for an approval on something else now, and it's 2025, so. I mean, we can leave it the way it is, and we can go have a cocktail, but-
Yeah, I mean, there, I mean, again, I, there is access out to Georges Road, and then, like I said, out, out to the rear, so there is, there is routes out of the, out of, in case it starts ponding up in here. Because I gotta imagine, over time, it slowly comes up, and you have time to get out.
It's standing water, I mean, obviously, Long Beach Island, the islands do it all the time, but I think the question is, do the residents know that in the case of heavy flooding-
I don't know what the leases say on them.
They move, that's, I mean, that would be, and, and anything that's gonna go, any changes that'll be made to the property is not- be made to the property is not gonna have any negative effect?
Yeah, I believe they're, thinking back to when we got the DEP approval, there, I believe we did have to put signs in there, this area is.
Prone to flooding.
Could be potential for flooding.
Okay, all right. Shall we swear, Mr. Tekeena, now?
So I have a, Mr. Tekeena.
You normally have the board ask questions, and then the board. We usually don't, unless it's an application where the, you don't usually have to pump the question into the applications, but the big applications.
Okay, all right. With regard to this application, John, you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth.
I do.
State your name, swear your last name, please.
John Tykeena, T as in Thomas, A I, K as in Kelly, I N as in Nicholas A. I'm a principal with all things.
Have you appeared in front of this board before?
Excuse me?
Have you appeared in front of this board before?
Dozens and dozens and dozens of times.
That makes 36, but that's good enough.
I'm, I'm still a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, and my license is still in current and in good standing.
Well, except Mr. Tekeena has an extra whip.
It is delightful being back in North Brunswick. I am here to talk about the application from a planning standpoint, but as you know, I do a little more than that, which is fine. So Bill did a, a good job of, of identifying the property, all the variances, et cetera. Again, it is two existing buildings, and when you look at, if you were there, and you look at them, they look like two completely separate sites. And the only way that they aren't, that right now, is literally by law, that they're all on one lot. So we're proposing just to separate them into two. But in every other way, they, they can function on their own, but they don't. They function together, they benefit from a very positive shared parking arrangement, where 360 has the opportunity to overflow onto 120, if that's necessary at peak periods for the restaurant, et cetera, and the residents at 120 could overflow onto the restaurant site if that additional parking is necessary. Additionally, the, the property now has big signs, and when I say big signs, I mean like two-foot by three-foot big, you know, like this size, that say, you know, property, you know, parking lot prone to flooding, and, you know, we, I don't know the, the status of the lease, but I'm certain that we would have no objection to including, you know, some sort of notice in our future leases as we come up, and for building management, you know, as part of our overall management, to provide some sort of, you know, warning, if you will, to our residents that, you know, hey, you know, Hurricane Erin is coming, and, you know, be careful, we might have to move, you might have to move your car over to, over to 360, and that that's allowed, because 360 is probably a good three or four feet higher than 120 is. So they, they can function very, very well. In terms of, and as you know, the, the 24 units that are in 120, they're predominantly one-bedroom and studios, so I think it's 20 one-bedroom and studios, and only four two-bedroom apartments that are there. So again, the, the number of parking spaces that we have of the 61 spaces being on site is more than enough for the 24 units that are there, and they're more than enough for the approximately 8,000 square feet of specialty retail that is there. And again, it's specialty retail. We have a coffee shop, we have a tattoo shop, we have a, a market that kind of goes in and out, kind of, you know, at different times. Difficult retail space, it's not fully on the street, but it does have pretty good visibility, and, and has good parking and access, et cetera, so. But again, it's a range of uses, and the approval, the approval that was provided by the zoning board in 2021 provided for a specific list of uses that could be on the ground floor there. And there are retail and service and, and office and, and things like that that are permitted. Likewise, at 360, we have, we have Butcher 360, which is on the ground floor, about a little over 3,000 square feet of restaurant, Korean barbecue, it's outstanding. And then upstairs is about another 32, 300 square feet of seating space that goes with the restaurant. And then on the rest of the ground floor, there's about another 10,000 square feet that kind of wraps around the edges of the building. It faces kind of the other three sides, nothing really faces Georgia's Road. And that space right now is vacant, and actually was just renovated with some new storefronts and things that make it look very attractive, but right now, the rest of that space is vacant. The only thing that's operating right now on 360 is Butcher 360. And as Bill said, there's good access between the two, there's a pedestrian bridge in the middle, and then there's a, a one-way driveway from 120 up to 360, that's all the way in the rear of the property, as, as Bill testified.
John, while you're looking, so I don't have to break your train, you had lifted those boards in front of you, and indicated signs of approximately this size, but just for the record, what do you think this size is as to those two boards?
This size is probably about six square feet, they're about two-foot by three-foot.
Thank you.
That, you know, show, you know, parking, parking, parking lots subject to prone to flooding, excuse me.
We can move on from them.
Excuse me?
We can move on from the flooding, I believe, I think.
Certainly.
Because what are there, don't park?
So, and all the notice works great, except for when they're not there. You know, that's the big challenge, is you, you notify the residents, and they're in Nantucket, and there's nothing you can do about it. But anyway, so in terms of the variances, I, I would submit to you that these are all C2 variances, while they are all certainly related to the very unique shape and configuration of this lot, they're self-imposed, are variances that we require, are self-imposed by the, by the nature of the subdivision. So it's the right spot for the, for the, for the subdivision line to go, it's logical, it does all those good things. But these are self-imposed variances, and I, and I won't repeat them, Bill did a perfect job of explaining exactly what they are. We have a three-foot side yard setback that's up against Bristol Myers Squibb for the existing National String Building, and then we have some existing setback for the 360 building that, that's to the south, against the, the existing property line, and then we have a side yard setback in between where we put that, where we put that line, and again, we do the line down the stream. So I submit to you, these are C variances. The case law for our C variances is laid out by Kaufman v. Warren from '87, right after the land use law was amended for this, and, and again, it provides a roadmap for the board to a good decision. So there's four specific findings that you're gonna look to make. One, that it relates to a specific piece of property. Two, that we advance some of the purposes of zoning. Three, that the benefits of granting the variances outweigh any detriments that may be imposed. And finally, as you know, with all of your relief, we have our negative criteria, we're not gonna have substantial detriment to the public good, and we're not gonna have a substantial impairment to the zone plan or the master plan. So first and foremost, the relief requested is for 123, 120 and 360 Georgia's Road, and no other property. The relief is specific to this site and the conditions on this site. The relief carries no precedent to any other property or any other application, they all need to stand on their own. In terms of our positive criteria, I'd submit to you there are three. These come right out of the municipal land use law, and the first is purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements, and in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. The two sites on separate lots will continue to provide sufficient space for each lot, they're gonna continue to, to operate very safely and efficiently, as Mr. Lane testified. It's just gonna give the, the applicant some additional flexibility, especially in these, in these times, when it comes to lending and leasing and, and financing, to be able to have the resources available so that we can continue to maintain this unique mixed and multiple use site. Purpose J, to promote the conservation of historic sites and districts and valuable resources in the state to prevent urban sprawl and the degradation of the environment through the improper use of the land. The subdivision will continue to support the preservation of the National Music Building and its wonderful adaptive reuse. I think the township really should be, get a lot of credit for what they did in, in 2011 and 2012. It was extraordinarily difficult site, and I think the township and the applicant worked very well together to get that accomplished. And then finally, purpose M, to encourage the coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development, with a view towards less in the cost of that development, and to the more efficient use of the land. So this application hasn't required to coordinate the many, many agencies and jurisdictions, and has done so, whether it's county, state, county DOT, DEP, et cetera. The subdivision will continue the efficient use of this very difficult site. It's gonna, again, facilitate that, and most importantly, facilitate the retention of the National Music Building. In terms of the balancing test, again, Poland v. South Plainfield provides that roadmap, and again, we find the benefits, we want to outweigh the benefits as a whole against any detriments, so the proposed subdivision provides a practical benefit to the owner, which will in turn manifest itself to the public in the continuation of this mixed and multiple use site, and the preservation of the National String Building. The parking on the site and the shared parking minimizes overall parking on a very difficult site, and it does it very efficiently in a way that, again, there's not too much, it's the Goldilocks, it's not, not too hot, not too cold, it's just right. And the provision of an appropriate and excessive amount of parking represents a better planning alternative. And then finally, in terms of our negative criteria, the proposal must not present a substantial detriment to public good. Again, there's a, there's no detriment here, the proposed development is there, it's existed for the last 10 years, it's operated very well for the last 10 years without any really identified or publicized issues. The continued shared operating will provide for good stewardship for the site and the uses, and there's no external impacts at all, again, just by the nature of the site and where it is. It's isolated from Squibb to the north by the big old fence, we have cemetery across the street, and we're really kind of isolated all the way up in this corner of Georgia's Road, so there's no really negative external impacts to any of our neighbors. And as far as the master plan and your zoning ordinance, the prior D variances acknowledged the very unique site in granting the D variance, in granting to provide for the adaptive reuse of National String, provide for the commercial uses in 360 and, and the ground floor of National String. Your 2018 master plan reexamination was extraordinarily practical in its, in its application, it addressed the changes and challenges in the township, and addressed them very well. This site was not one of them. It had been addressed, its challenge had been, had been met and mastered. So again, I, I don't believe that there is any, any impairment to your plan by continuing this existing land use pattern, albeit on two, two smaller lots. I don't think that'll have any impact on the plan or the ordinance. So accordingly, I think you have the ability to grant the relief requested. I'm available for your questions.
So, I, I've heard it twice, and I think you just mentioned it too, as far as taking the wall down to separate the two buildings? Right, removal of a wall, separate building for financing reasons, or?
Adding the line to separate the two lots, yes.
Okay, that's purely for financing reasons?
As I understand it, yes. My understanding right now in the industry, and you know it as well as anybody does, financing is extraordinarily difficult, and I believe our owners were finding that when it was trying to finance the thing overall, it was kind of too many moving parts to be able to obtain that funding.
We could still operate as two separate businesses, crap, even if we didn't define it.
It could, it could still operate as two separate businesses, owned by two separate owners.
It may make it easier, but two different businesses are two different financing options. It may make it easier on, on the owner, but it's not, it's not gonna prohibit them from getting financing at all. I mean, it may make the value, business more valuable, people like separating businesses, definitely no one here, would you say it'd make it more advantageous to expansion or development later on?
It would, it would make it more advantageous to continued investment in the property, yes.
It'd make the property more valuable for the owner, that's what's supposed to produce the.
Yes.
It's not about financing, it's about maximizing potential, which is the American way, so.
I think they're similar, the same thing, but yes.
So let's call it what it is, it's not, you can get financing on that, just to be clear.
I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering, and, and again, you didn't, you didn't want John Tykeena to ask or answer engineering questions, can the owner just tell us, is the owner here? Can he just tell us why he wants to do this? We're just trying to understand a little better what's going on, and, and it's no big deal, there's no, I'm not asking this because I'm opposed to it or for it, is the owner here? Can he just explain to us why they're looking, why they're looking to do this? As opposed to John say, I think it's because they want to finance? John doesn't have knowledge, that, that's not his area of expertise.
Well, I, but I indicated before that based upon the narrative in the signed application, and I can pull my client on, the desire was to create two separate lots for purposes of future financing and possible future leasing of separate lots. That's the, there is no, there's nothing magic, there's nothing hidden, it's just to, as it's done in other situations, to create two lots, we may want to finance this as bank number one, we may to finance this, and we may want to lease it, but we don't want to lease the whole parcel. So we may say, here's your lease, subject to easements and access agreements. That's pure and simple, what it, what it is.
All right, so, so you.
I assume, and, and I, well, I, I.
It's not parent simple, it's just all.
Mrs. Enger.
He's not here for a reason.
Because he is, he's well-versed in the finance industry, and I mean this with respect, we know each other, I mean, he may have clients who from time to time, you know, want to create cash, cash issues, I don't mean green cash, I mean finance, you know, take money out of a project, or they may want to enhance it, they may want to do repairs or remodeling, they go and they finance one of the units, but they don't want to finance both and put them under the.
I understand, so just, your, your client understands that. If ABC is one business, and it's connected to PDQ, two separate financials, two separate businesses, two separate lemmings, right, it doesn't matter if they're subdivided or not. However, it makes it more advantageous to the future for tenants like to have a separated line, so.
Is the, is the owner here tonight?
I'm sorry?
Is the owner here tonight?
Yes.
Is he, any reason the owner couldn't just come up and just tell us himself, as opposed to John Thomas?
I'll bring her up. Is that, I'm not hiding, my clients are very nice people.
Right.
Typically, my philosophy is I don't put applicants on unless I, I have to, because I, I try and move an application along.
Well, there's a lot of confusion at the board, so I think that would help.
Who wants to come up tonight? Let's ask, I have to ask John a question. John, there's a fact that several of these variances appear to be self-created, Walter, your testimony, or change your testimony?
No, again, that's why I believe that we have to use the C2 criteria, because they are self-created, and we just think this is a better planning alternative to have it on two separate lots than to have one big lot.
For the township or for the applicant?
We think for both. We think there's benefits to, to both, to have two what are essentially distinct sites and uses to be on separate lots.
Ratable go up for the township?
This is like a genius.
I'm sorry, does the ratable go up for the township then, if it's two separate lots?
He's very soft-spoken.
I'm sure, I'm sure any, any accrual in value to the owner would likewise accrue to the.
But Mr. Chairman.
I'm just, we're just asking.
Mr. Vigna, both of whom, you know, I respect, without.
Stoll, I can't hear you, could you, and I, can I just say, I apologize, maybe, maybe it's the sound system tonight, but, but, but it's not, it's not just you, it, and, and Mr. Tekeena's been here a gazillion times, he's a, a good witness, it's been difficult to understand some, and, and I'm speaking to our attorney too, we, we're struggling, almost trying to read lips or something.
I know.
So please, slow it down in an unsafe, better, it's probably the sound system, not you guys, but.
I, I know, because I mean, we're all soft-spoken.
Okay, now, now that's much better, thank you.
All right. The, the application should stand or fall on its own merits. The justification for why, the why, and, and I submit, you are entitled to the why. The why is very simply, as I've indicated, and I can bring the client up here, but I can't get into the details of it, I mean, financial details, they want the ability at some point in time to do separate financing, or no financing on both, financing on one, but not the other.
on both, financing on one but not the other, or they may want to lease a parcel, or, or, and I hate to say this because I don't want to bring up another issue, maybe they want to condo the two properties, but I will tell you that we've had no discussion, it's simply for the purpose of leasing or financing. If the board would be comfortable, I'll bring my client up.
I'm stressing from a factual point of view. You do not need to separate a building and have two separated businesses delineated, subdivided, to get financing on two separate business units. So it's factually false. That's my point. But the financing is up to your clients. They're asking us for variances, right? They're asking, and we're asking questions, and the owner doesn't want to come up here and testify. So, we want, I mean...
I learned long ago, Mr...
What are we going to do to mitigate something like that?
The owner could have been up and testified already, and we'd be on to...
I learned long ago not to argue with you or Mr. Vigna or your predecessors as chair people.
Are we all done with John?
I think we're done with John. I don't understand.
It's very easy. Which one wants to testify? Come. Don't worry. It's very easy, come.
Yeah, okay.
Just, well, I have two young professionals. What is your name?
My name is Mi Young Lim.
No.
My name is Mi Young Lim.
Raise your right hand. With, okay, first of all, could you spell your name? First name and second name.
M.I.Y.O.U.N.G.
Okay. All right, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Okay, hold on, but we're from the Pioli, so this is the owner, Ms. Lim, and I'm the office manager. We're trying to, we're kind of hesitate to be here because our, I mean, the first language is not English, so we didn't really expect this. I will translate, but if you want.
As long as you translate the truth and nothing but the truth.
You are the office manager.
Yeah.
What is your name, please?
My name is Min Sun, M.I.N.S.U.N., Chang, C.H.U.N.G., so...
And you are the office manager.
Office manager, but yeah.
Go ahead, no, all right. And you're employed by Pioli. May we have her sworn in, please? Yes. Does the, does the other individual, does the other individual speak English at all or well or?
She does, a little bit, but she's not...
Would you feel better to... I'm trying to, I'm trying to do this a different way. I'm just trying. Let me have that. Are you familiar with the business of Pioli Properties LLC?
A little bit.
A little bit? I need to swear her in. All right, so then we'll use the interpreter. Okay, I will ask you.
No. The owner will, the owner will answer, and the interpreter will let us go with it.
Is she an interpreter? Is that what she is?
I don't know.
We'll accept her as an interpreter. She speaks both languages.
Are you interpreting for her?
I can't interpret her, but...
I'm fine with that.
Does she, will she, does she understand, will she understand the board questions? That's my question.
Yeah, she, yeah.
Well, then...
How can the court stenographer possibly get this down? I don't, I can't follow this.
Hold on, listen. All we want to ask, we want to ask the owner a few questions. If English is her second language, we respect that. So we'll ask the question, the person next to her side, we'll ask, we'll reiterate that in her language.
Just use the microphone, please.
Yeah, yeah.
I need to swear in both.
Both people?
Yeah, well, I swore in, and I'll get your name later, you know, your full spelling. You, could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
And if there are questions that your friend cannot understand, you can translate for her, correct?
Yes.
Or help her with the English.
Yeah, I will help her with, again.
Okay, all right. Here we go, you're ready. Very easy.
But let her hold the, have the microphone when she talks, please.
All right. What is your full name? Yours, interpreter?
My name is Min Sun Chang.
Min Sun.
Yeah.
What is the name of your employer, the young lady? You gotta hold the mic right to your...
Hold it.
There's two parts. Please use the other one.
This is a shit, this is crazy. Just a minute, just a minute. All right, this way, it's green. Now, what is the young lady's name to your left?
What's her name?
Her name is Mi Young Lim.
Okay. Now, will you please ask her, is she a owner of an interest in Pioli?
Pioli의 주인이 받으시죠?
Yes.
Yes.
Speak up, all right.
Yes.
How long has she been an owner of Pioli?
Pioli 회사가 얼마 동안 주인이셨습니다.
Since 2007.
Since 2007?
Yes.
And as such, is she familiar with the business of Pioli?
Pioli 사업을 알고 계세요? She's familiar with it, yes.
Why do we want to...
She said yes.
Why do we want to subdivide the property?
우리가 subdivision하고 싶은 이유가 뭔지...
네 부처 레스토랑 아니에요. I'm a owner of 부처 360 레스토랑.
No, no, do it in...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I want...
In your language.
Yes, 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 yes. 120 팔고 싶은데, 120 George's Road는 팔고 부처 레스토랑이 그360 사이드 레스토랑 있기 때문에 그거는 팔고 싶지 않다. 내가 운영하고 있기 때문에.
Okay. So, we want to subdivide for the future, like selling, divide up the land and selling maybe possibly 120. I'm currently running the 360 부처. We don't want to sell that, we want to keep that, but we're thinking of selling the 120 property.
Now, we get an answer. Okay. Second. No further questions? Chair, anyone else have any questions?
No, she said, she said, selling 120, 120, which is the residential piece. 6 story, higher one.
This is, 120 is residential piece, so it's correct?
Yes. So 120 is the piece that they are considering selling? Based on what we just heard?
Yes, that is what I just learned as well.
You're the last, you're the last person to testify.
Yes.
Can I just ask one other question? The person, the second person to get up to speak, I think, is the manager. Do people, do people who lease at 120, there's, I know there's a sign there that the lot may flood, but is there anything in their lease with respect to that? Because they're going to be two separate, at some point in time, they're going to be two separate properties, and I know there are going to be necessary easements, I'm just wondering if there's anything in their lease.
We, we do not believe so at this time. The applicant has no objection...
To putting something...
To putting that in our future leases.
Mr. Watson, I'd like to hear your comments, commentary on some easements known at the board's...
Yeah, I think, I think my, my main question is how do we formalize these access agreements? How, does it become a condition of this approval, or how do we get that to be the parking easement, the access easement, the pedestrian bridge? That, you know, after all the testimony I've heard, that becomes my, my main question. How we protect them?
Normally, I believe what, what we have done is we've made, you know, easements shown on the map and condition of approval, and they would not, you know, they wouldn't, you wouldn't issue a resolution compliance letter, CME wouldn't issue that unless the board attorney had reviewed the easements and determined that the easements were satisfactory, that people from the residential portion could park up above. It's the first time tonight I heard that the commercial piece could also park below, but whatever, whatever way, it'd be a condition, it was approved, and you would not, CME would not issue a resolution compliance letter until we had a written statement from the board attorney that the easements were adequate.
Yeah, the engineer would review them meets and bounds description.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure if I may, and we've done this before, both myself and Mr. Lane, and I think I've made submissions to CME also. We would normally, subject to council approval, council, SEL attorney, and subject to engineer approval, prepare a blanket, not fully blanket easements, but easements across both properties going both ways with regard to pedestrian and vehicular traffic, unencumbered between the two properties, and arranging for who is going to contribute to any repair and/or repaving. The storm sewer is already there, so that doesn't have to be documented because it's already on the plat. But we would prepare, using meets and bounds or whatever Bill and I, Lane and I, think is appropriate, an appropriate easement covering all issues that would go to Jim, Jim Watson, and to council for approval, then we would have it finalized, signed off on, and recorded. They could be, but I haven't even thought it through yet, I would talk to council, they could be on the subdivision deeds as a reservation of easement. So I might talk to the board attorney on that. That, to me, might be an easier way, but I want to talk to Bill Lane and to Jim Watson. Jim, do you have any thought, if I can ask a question? Do you have any thoughts on putting it in a reservation in the subdivision deeds?
What does that mean?
I don't understand that. Can you explain that?
Let me, let me tell you what I'm used to. First, the board, as an entity, has to be satisfied from seeing a plan or revised plans as to where these easements are going to be. So they have a familiarity with the location. If, if the board signs off on that, rather than saying, well, we don't know where they are, but we'll turn it loose to, to council and the attorney, the board may want to see more, more meat on the bones here, and if they're happy with it, then you would prepare a deed, meets and bounds, I've not heard of, it would be a condition of approval, if there's an approval, you would prepare the deed or deeds, meets and bounds, to be reviewed by the engineer, by the attorney, and if they're satisfactory, then go ahead and record them, and you'd need a letter, I don't know how you do it, if Jim would give you a letter saying everything's good. But I don't know specifically what you're proposing, Mr. Stoll, in terms of reservation. I think the big question is that the board, has the board seen enough to say, to cut this application loose and vote on it, leaving everything to, to the engineer and the attorney, or do you want to see more information? I don't know.
Can I ask Jim? Have you, is it clear enough to you, from what you've seen, is it clear enough to you where it is, subject to the legalities and the meets and bounds? Is everything clear enough to you?
Yeah.
Okay, so if it's clear enough to Jim, just from my personal standpoint, I would say it's clear enough from my standpoint. So then, just...
That's fine.
Be the legalities of it being drafted and sent to CME and to the board attorney for...
So the lot lines are clear. It's how we grant the access between the two lots for parking and circulation.
And all the language.
Have you seen that at all yet?
No.
All right, that's what I'm, this shows the boundaries, but I'm more concerned with the, with the more intimate easements, crossings, and driveways and things like that.
But it, I mean, that is in our letter. We're asking for access easements to be shown, formally documented, for vehicular and pedestrian crossings, so, you know, they're going to have to resubmit that in order to comply with our comments.
But, so just, and because our attorney is new to the board here today, not to boards in general, just us, so while the easements aren't shown, it's clear where they would need to be, and you're saying you want them shown and documented, right?
Right.
Okay, so you're satisfied, you're satisfied that it's clear where they need to be?
I'm satisfied where the, you know, the lot line, the new lot lines are drawn.
Right.
And I believe we need an easement over that pedestrian bridge and over the vehicular bridge, and then we need language that allows for that cross access.
And you're comfortable that that can be, that that, that can be submitted to you if you to, to accept the meets and bounds and then for our board attorney to work on the legalities of the language to make sure that everybody's... So there's no, there's no reason not to move forward now at this point in time?
Correct.
No reason not to?
Correct.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
Any other questions from the board?
And Tom, if I may, I have no, and I thank Mr. Watson, we've, Jim and I and Mr. Lane have worked on many, many projects, and we will make him and the council, council attorney, we can do it. Thank you very much.
I need a motion to open this application to the public.
I, I move we open it to the public.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to be heard on this specific application?
Good luck.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Carol Pazamant, P.A.S.Z.A.M.A.N.T., on the Environmental Commission, and we did visit the site, and I can attest that the signs there are very apparent about the flooding, which is helpful. And I would say that, given today's environment, that the musical string factory would never have been allowed to exist, I don't think. It's a flood zone. And I believe that that's how One Mile Run is the name of the stream, and I thought that that was the boundary between New Brunswick and North Brunswick, which is why 120 is in New Brunswick and 360 is in North Brunswick, but that has nothing to do with it. But my point would be that no matter who owns which parcel, that I think there should be something stipulated, that there should be no further construction there because the drainage is already inadequate, and that's about all I have to say.
I don't think we all agree on that. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to be heard? Motion to move to close the public portion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, any discussion, Tom? I think we've reached this a little bit.
No, all, all I was trying to do from day one is to get some clarity. This is new to this board, there was no map, the public has a right to see what's going on, but I'm, I'm comfortable now that we, that we understand what's going on, and Jim and our attorney are comfortable, so I don't have any more questions.
We trusted our professionals here. Does anyone else have any questions?
No.
If not, then if someone would like to...
Can I just ask one more question? So, just to put it on the record, you know, were there anything else in our memo, our August 4th memo, that you'd have any issue addressing, you're, you're willing to comply with everything in the memo?
We have been presented with Mr. Watson's memo. I don't have the date in front of me, but on behalf of the applicant, we accept all terms and conditions as set forth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And just to reiterate, because of the microphone situation, they accept all your terms.
Yep.
Would anyone like to try to make, put this in the form of a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the subdivision and bulk variances resulting from the subdividing of the lots, subject to all necessary easements being provided to CME associates to their satisfaction and also to our board attorney, board attorney's satisfaction, with the possibility of the residential portion being, being, being sold off. I'd also, I don't know, can we do this, like to make it a condition of the resolution that all, all future leases, the people leasing the residential portion, that to be put on notice, that the parking, the parking in front of the building floods, and they, they'll be required to park on the adjacent lot. Can we make that a condition of the approval?
Mr. Stoll, do you have any, any concerns with doing something like that, even if it's the best efforts of the owner? Best efforts of the owner, proper signage?
it's the best efforts of the owner, best efforts of the owner, proper signage, things along those lines?
Yeah, I don't have a, we don't have a problem, it's a, it's a good neighbor policy, we can do that.
I'd suggest to the board that we do not have any signs, signage on the New Brunswick piece, that would, might cause a problem.
Or fu, or future leases, so we don't have to start collecting them.
Or future leases.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Zangara?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Ms. Malvoon?
Yes.
Mr. Vigna?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. DeCandia?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Have I warmed the board up for Mr. Toto?
Yep, thank you very much. And your client, your client could have had us out loud if you just would have let us.
Thank you very much.
You're right.
Where they move Rubenstein.
When she held the microphone up, it was melt. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Take care. Thank you.
Um, I think...
Yeah.
Thanks, Bill. Take care.
Okay, moving right along, next up on, next up, 2688 Mega International LLC, 1060 Aaron Road, preliminary and major site plan, 4,000 square foot cigar lounge.
Yes, that application is ready, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Mr. Watson and board secretaries tonight, I guess I can say. Good evening, Walter Toto on behalf of the applicant, Mega International, which does business as Tobacco Leaf. Is my voice projecting enough? Can the board hear me properly? I, okay, thank you. Okay, so without further ado, I believe we submitted an affidavit of service and publication, and that Emma Von Thun had indicated that all was in order. I don't want to be presumptuous with regard to jurisdiction, but I believe the board has jurisdiction to hear this matter. I have a copy of, of my affidavit of service and publication, if that's necessary, but we've submitted it.
I reviewed it, it appeared appropriate to me.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, so, tonight, the applicant is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval to permit what is essentially the repurposing of the former Brunswick Bank and Trust building at 1060 Aaron Road. We're transforming this, hopefully, into a, a premium cigar sale shop with a sampling room. And the store itself would be 3,000 square feet, and then we are sort of repurposing the drive-through to create a 1,000 square foot sampling room. And again, this is, these are premium cigars, and they only sell cigars, there's no other tobacco products that are sold, that would be sold. The applicant has two other locations in Robbinsville and Princeton, so we're happy to give the board some anecdotal evidence about...
I'm sorry, could you, could you back up?
Sure.
I didn't, I didn't hear what you said before, you mentioned Robbinsville.
I, so, the, the applicant has two other stores of this nature.
Oh, okay.
One in Robbinsville and one in Princeton.
Okay.
And we're happy to provide the board with some testimony to provide some anecdotal evidence with regard to parking, with regard to whether they create any nuisances, which of course they don't, in the areas where they operate, both in Robinson, Robbinsville, I'm sorry, Robbinsville and in Princeton. I should note that the board approved the bank application back in 1988, I don't necessarily expect anyone to remember that application. This application itself requires five bulk variances, however, four of them are pre-existing. The only new variance that we're asking for is for the elimination of a loading area. The board, the ordinance rather in town requires one loading area, and because of the frequency, or I should say the infrequency of deliveries that these guys experience or will experience, we're not proposing any, any loading area per se. And the applicant will testify to the fact that they only receive box trucks, and it's sparing, sparingly, it's once or twice a week, and it's for a very limited period of time. You know, UPS, FedEx, that sort of thing, certainly no tractor trailers or anything of that ilk. And the variances themselves, which I'm happy to spell out, and let me back up a little bit, but I just want to make sure I complete the record here. The property in question is 1060 Aaron Road, it's also known as Lot 21.02 in Block 74, it's just over one acre in area, and it's in the C2 general commercial zone. This type of store is a permitted use, and of course, that's why we're before you guys tonight and not the Board of Adjustment. And as far as the variances that were provided in the notice and called out by Mr. Watson, one relates to the, the minimum front yard setback, 60 feet is required, and we're proposing 46.4 feet, and that's a pre-existing condition. The second is the freestanding sign setback, 20 feet are required, and 6 feet is existing, that will not change either, that's also a pre-existing condition. As far as the off-street parking, where one space per 200 square feet is required, 20 spaces are required, and we're proposing 16 spaces. I believe the bank had 14, so in essence, we're sort of mitigating that pre-existing variance, and we'll have testimony from our traffic expert, traffic and parking expert, engineer, to demonstrate why that would be, that sort of deviation from the standard will certainly not cause any detriment to, to the public, and is justifiable. The parking in the front yard is number four on the variance list, and that should be no closer than 10 feet to the street line, and there are five parking spaces located at 4 feet from the existing lot line, and that's also a pre-existing nonconformity.
Exactly.
And the last one is what I'd already mentioned, which was the loading space requirement. And again, the ordinance requires one loading space, and we are not proposing a, a loading space at all. We have the report from Mr. Watson, dated August 4th, 2025, we're happy to go through that, and I believe we can comply with all of his recommendations, and I'll, we'll walk my engineer through that. We also have the combined agency reviews, that was supplied probably two to three weeks ago, so we have that report as well. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I have four witnesses. The first is Charag Bonsal, he's from the applicant, I have Sharif Ali from AmerTech Engineering, he's our project engineer, I have Kurt Ludwig, Kurt is our architect, he has elevations and a floor plan to provide to the board, and Frank Miskovich will wrap things up. Last but not least, of course, our engineer that will testify as to traffic and to parking. So Sharif, if you don't mind, could you actually put the...
Oh, you did it already.
Beautiful. Okay. So Charag, if you don't mind, would you come up and be sworn in?
Let's take them one at a time. If you could raise your right hand, please, sir. Is that what, patient, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth to help your God?
I do. My name is Charag Bonsal, last name spelled B as in boy, A as in apple, and as Nancy S for Sam, A as in apple, L for Larry.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Charag, do you have a connection with Mega International LLC, the applicant?
Yes, I do.
And what is that relationship?
I'm an employee of Mega International LLC.
And how many years have you been employed?
I've been employed now for six years, I believe, six or seven years.
Six or, okay, and in what capacity?
I started off at the very bottom, and I am now a manager.
So describe what it means to be the manager of, of, at Mega International, what does that actually entail?
So that entails ensuring staff are properly trained, shelves are stocked, reordering, keeping the place clean, and customers are happy.
So you're implying that you have other retail cigar stores with sampling rooms in New Jersey, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and whereabouts?
We have one location in Princeton and one location in Robbinsville, New Jersey.
Okay, and how long, let's start with Robbinsville first, how long has the Robbinsville store been in existence?
Robbinsville has been around for about a decade now.
Okay, let's stick with Robbinsville. How many square feet do you have in Robbinsville?
Robbinsville is approximately 2,000 square feet.
And how many parking spaces at Robbinsville?
Robbinsville has about eight parking spaces.
Okay, and how is the parking situation? Do you find it problematic, do your customers find it problematic? Describe for the board what happens.
No, so the majority of our customers are walk-in, walk-out, so people will come in to come purchase a cigar, they take about five to 10 minutes usually, and usually they pick up their cigars and they leave. And then about 10% of the customers will come, and they will actually sit and enjoy a cigar, spending anywhere from 30 to 60 minutes smoking before leaving. I've never really run into situations where parking's been an issue.
With regard to just the, the aesthetic of cigar smoking that occurs within the sampling room in Robbinsville, let me back up, is there, is there outside seating in Robbinsville?
Yes, there is.
There is?
Yes.
Okay, and despite that, do you have any complaints from any neighbors regarding cigar smoke?
No, and we have residential units above us, and we have retail units besides us as well.
Okay, and you're on the first floor?
We're on the first floor.
Okay. Now, in Princeton, it's a bit of a different situation, correct?
Correct.
And how, how big is that store?
Princeton's also approximately about 2,000 square feet.
And how many parking spaces?
Princeton has about eight or nine parking spaces as well.
And is that part of a larger shopping center?
Yes, Whole Foods is in that parking center, we're also located next to Jersey Mike's, Marshall's is there, so it's a, it's a much bigger plaza.
Any issues with parking in Princeton?
No, we have no, no parking issues whatsoever.
How about any issues with neighbors, whomever they may be, with cigar smoke, smell, et cetera?
No, during the time that we've been there, we have not received any complaints from any of our neighbors.
How did you come to choose 1060 Aaron Road in North Brunswick?
We've looked at North Brunswick as kind of a cigar desert, and we wanted to, to come in and provide you guys with a way to relax, so we found 1060 Aaron Road off of Route 1 to be a very nice location, and I love the community, I'm from South Brunswick myself, and I've been in South Brunswick now over 30 years, so I consider North Brunswick a neighbor, and I'm looking for housing here, so hopefully I'll be a, a resident of North Brunswick very soon.
So, Charag, you mentioned some of the details of, of customer behavior in Robbinsville, so just describe a typical day for the proposed store. In other words, how much time would the average customer spend in the store?
So typically, we'll open up at around 11 o'clock, customers will walk in, again, it's a very quick sales process because we are guiding a customer as to what they will pick out and what they will enjoy, usually takes between five to 10 minutes per customer at the max. And once we get to really know our customers, which we do, because many of them are repeat customers, and we'll have them in and out of there usually between, you know, five minutes or less.
How about a customer that uses the cigar sampling room? Obviously, they're smoking a cigar.
Yes.
At least one, right? If anyone can smoke two, I know I certainly can. How long would someone in the cigar sampling room spend at the store?
Usually about 30 to 60 minutes per cigar.
30 to 60, okay. And as far as foot traffic in general, customer traffic more specifically, how many customers do you expect on a, on a given weekday?
On a weekday, no more than 10 people. Will show up, anywhere between seven to 10 people will show up, just because it is a niche business, so it doesn't generate quite as much high traffic as, as some other retail businesses.
Excuse me, that was seven to 10 people total, not, not using the sampling room, just total?
Seven to 10 people, as in like walking customers, yes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And how about, same question for the weekend, how many customers?
For the weekend, up to about 10 to 15 people.
Okay. And how, how many, bless you, how many, how many employees do you propose?
We're going to have one full-time employee and one part-time staff.
And how about hours and days of operation?
We'll operate every single day from 11 to 8:30.
11 to 8, seven days a week?
Yeah.
Okay. Charag, let's go back to the, the products that you sell. You consider, let's just go into the details for the board with regard to what exactly is sold on site.
Yeah, so we primarily specialize in premium cigars, that's been our bread and butter, our family's been in the cigar industry for about 40 years, started with my grandfather, my father, then I, and we have some pipe tobacco products, but for the vast majority of products that we sell, over 90%, is all cigars and pipe tobacco. Yeah, and then we also have cigar cutters, accessories and stuff like that, we, we don't sell any vape pens, we don't sell any THC or Delta products.
Chairman's asking about vapes, right? Yeah. So that's a no on vapes?
That's a no on vapes, no on Delta products, we don't, I don't, I don't personally condone those uses.
Okay, all right. I didn't mean to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, but, so, Charag, confirm the types of delivery trucks that you might get.
Yeah, so deliveries happen once or twice a, a week, and usually it's a FedEx, you know, UPS truck, fairly standard. We don't get large amounts of product being delivered all at once, nothing comes in on a pallet, and nothing's coming in, and, you know, definitely no large, larger container trucks, so.
How long is the process of removing the product from whatever truck may be delivering the product?
They usually will drop it off right on the counter, so it usually takes less than five minutes, so.
The Environmental Commission recommended installing solar panels, what is your intention in that regard?
Well, I drive a Tesla, so I, I could use some solar panels. Once we have the building up and running and we're able to properly plan for it, I would love to see some solar panels on there.
Just to be clear, it's not part of this application?
No, it is not.
Okay.
Yeah, eventually.
Any outside seating?
No, no outside seating in this location.
And just to hopefully sway some of the concerns that maybe a neighbor might have, as far as the, the sampling room, and Kurt, Mr. Ludwig will get into this in more detail.
Can you use the mic, please?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And Mr. Ludwig will get more in detail about this, but as far as open windows, the, the side of the building closest to Aaron Plaza, those windows are fixed windows, you couldn't open those if you wanted to, correct?
Correct, yeah, those are fixed windows in place, you can't open those.
Okay, and there's, there's no, you don't promote smoking outside?
No, we don't, there's no reason to when we're building a beautiful room for you to smoke inside of.
I'm sorry, you said you don't promote smoking outside, is that what you said?
I meant outside the building, I actually, yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, exactly, correct, yeah. Right, right.
And, and with, with regard, I'm sorry, was there a question that, that's outstanding?
As far as ventilation for your, your smoking room, how does, how is that?
You'll have exhaust systems that we have that will pull air right to the roof of the building, so.
Okay, so there's nothing permeating in the air or anything?
No, absolutely not, and we have plenty of experience with this, we've operated in, especially Robbinsville, which is, we have six residential units above our store, and we have retail next to our stores, so we are very, very familiar with how to correctly implement these systems so that there is no lingering smoke in the air.
And, and I just had one other question, as far as, I know you have the smoking room, you don't, you're not anticipating holding any type of events or anything such as that?
So there's no parties.
Bands or live, live, you know?
No, most, most of the events that we do are, tend to be sales events, so I'll have a rep come.
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand that, can you, can you hold the mic a little closer and say that again?
Sure. We don't intend on holding any events other than sales events.
You don't intend to hold any?
No.
No parties, you can't have a cigar smoking party? I couldn't have 20 or 30 of my friends come, 20 friends come to that.
Maybe you especially, we could talk about that, but...
No, that's because of limitations.
But that's, 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 we're only allowed to do what you let us do. But as of right now, we, we don't intend that. All of our, all of our events that we do typically tend to be sales events, so we have a rep that comes in, and they'll give special offers and deals, as you know, New Jersey has a 30% state tax, so we compete with Pennsylvania, so we try on our events to give better pricing to our customers.
And there's, there's no, which is a good point, is no alcohol.
BYOB.
BYOB.
So we don't sell any liquor on Prime.
No, but if I'm coming, and I'm coming to smoke a cigar and hang out, can I bring my own?
I would, yeah, I mean, most, most, most customers do do that, I mean, that is a tradition as old as time when it comes to smoking cigars. I don't know anybody who doesn't enjoy a Scotch or a bourbon with a cigar.
Charag, how do you, how do you monitor that? Like, are you wary of anyone coming in who might be inebriated, for lack of a better word?
So we always observe all of our customers, if anybody has ever been inebriated at any of our locations, we've promptly removed them from the stores. of our locations, we've promptly removed them from the stores. We don't tolerate any type of inappropriate behavior, also because we're not trying to be a nuisance to any of the towns that we're in. We already operate in very professional areas with very professional people, and it would be a stain on our reputation if we were to allow that to happen. Yes. Absolutely. Yes.
Exactly.
You don't have any issues, parking issues there, but none of them are standalone buildings?
No, they're not.
When you say you have eight spots?
Right.
I mean, it could mean 80, right? Because if Whole Foods, no one's there.
Sure.
So...
What I can...
I mean, what is the most that you think could, you know, I mean, could, could there be 10 or 20 people in there and then what cell, where would the, I mean, the employee and the two cars?
We wouldn't have enough seating for, like, for more than that, right?
Well, even if you're just coming in.
But the other thing...
The crowds used to pick up.
The other thing is the turnaround traffic is so quick. I mean, like, people are not standing in a cigar shop. One, usually their wives or kids are in the car waiting for them or telling them to get home. For most of the guys, most of our customers that are there, so they're not hanging around a really long time. And that's for 90% of our customers. 90% of our customer base does not have that much time. They're coming in, they're picking up cigars, and they're leaving. So the overlap, the turnover rate is high, so...
And I know the surrounding, you know, area, the businesses where you're...
Right, right.
Whatever you want to call it.
Right, but the other way we can...
No one's gonna be walking through the parking lots either from the vegetable place or Aaron Plaza next to you?
I don't, I don't think anybody...
How do we prevent people from parking and the other businesses parking and maybe coming across? Right now, you can't go across.
I mean, all I can do is advise customers that, you know, if you're coming to patronize our business, you know, and then same thing, everybody has...
Maybe there's a fence or something going up to make sure.
Understood, I think we'd have to have an open dialogue with the Aaron Plaza people.
Can you move closer to the microphone?
Sure, sure.
Getting a couple inches closer makes all the difference.
Understood. No, I was here earlier, so I felt...
It was horrible.
I felt your pain. No, no, all kidding aside, I think that what, we'd have to have an open dialogue with the Aaron Plaza people about whether there are any issues. Again, of course, there's a police enforcement in North Brunswick, which is, we can't just rely on that, right? There's zoning office.
A nice fence along the boundary line to make sure that people aren't gonna be walking through with...
A fence along the boundary line? Yeah, I mean, that's, that makes sense. Sure, we, I think we would agree to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, so I could understand as far as the loading areas and so forth.
Sure.
I mean, either one of these, I was gonna ask this question. Let's just say, business is booming or whatever, you sell it, goes under, then what? Like, if another business comes in to occupy it and there's no, we, there's no loading area anymore, can we, so then there's no loading area, like, right for future?
And someone wanted...
I don't know if I'm saying it right, but you know...
Yeah.
Just because we're getting rid of something, can we, are we not getting, we're just getting ready for this use?
I'll defer to counsel, but it's a great question, and I think, say, a 4,000-square-foot permitted use, wanted to come on board, they probably could, but I'll defer to counsel on that.
The question was, sorry, the question was, if we grant the variance for no loading, unloading area for this particular use, and they decided to move elsewhere or went under, and then another retail business could come in there and move in without having a loading area? Yeah, because, yeah, our approval tonight is not just for a cigar, it's not just for a cigar-smoking retail business.
If we did that, yes, any new owner would take the, take the property as we approved it, if they wanted the, if they wanted a loading dock, then they would...
Right, but we couldn't require it if a permitted use came in, we couldn't require it later.
But we could prohibit straight trucks or over a certain, because you said you're UPS and FedEx, right?
Correct, yeah, we don't...
Delivery by X amount of trucks.
Yeah.
Truck trailers.
FedEx truck.
Yeah.
They're not gonna, yeah.
Garbage? Cigar delivery by tractor trailer.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not...
Do you have much garbage, like, at other shops? Like, do you just use the township container, like, how to?
We just have a cleaning, a cleaning service.
Is there a loading dock there now?
It's fairly limited.
Oh, so we're not, we're not eliminating a loading dock, because there isn't, there isn't one there now anyway?
No, the variance is that they don't want to provide one. That's requesting variance, correct?
I'm just saying, okay.
Yeah.
I just have a couple.
Yes, Jim.
So, so there is no loading space onsite right now?
Right now, there is not. Sharif, correct? The bank did not have a loading dock?
But it's not a pre-existing condition as far as a variance from, like, the bank didn't get a variance for a loading?
Fair enough, and I've been calling it a non-pre-existing, I've been calling it a new variance, the loading, the lack of a loading area.
And then I'm wondering about the size of the building. You said your, your two existing locations are 2,000 square feet. This is a 3,000-square-foot building, and now you're bringing it to 4,000, so I'm just wondering the need for that square footage or what your thoughts are on that?
So the reason why we decided to go with this building in particular is because the hallmark of any cigar shop is a walk-in humidor.
Could you really slow it down? Because why?
It's because the hallmark of any cigar store...
It'd be funny, but we can't follow.
No, yeah. The hallmark of any cigar store is a walk-in humidor, and we did not have space to build one before, and we finally have the space and ability to actually put one in, so we're actually increasing our retail footprint. Yeah, so that's why we needed more space for this. Our cigar humidor is actually much, it will take up the majority of our space.
And are minors allowed in the store?
Minors?
Yeah, like unaccompanied minors.
Oh, minors, sorry. No, there are no minors that are allowed in the store without their parents. And I also, for cigar smoking, it's just an absolute deterrent for most young kids anyway. I don't think I've seen young kids walking around with a cigar.
Just asking.
Yeah. And we're very strict about that, you know? I'd ID Walter if he walked in there.
You do.
I just have a question. I mean, given the size, that this is like 3,000 square feet, how many, you said that you would have one full-time and one other person?
Yeah, just...
How is that, if you're increasing, with your others are only 2,000 square feet, and this is larger, how is it?
So the way we've laid out the store makes it pretty efficient for one person to be there and be able to handle everything, because, again, what we've done is we increased the size of our walk-in humidor, which is the main space. The actual seating area only holds like 10 to 12 people or 14 people, I think it was?
14, yeah.
And then the actual retail space, where you actually do the majority of your selling, once the person is sitting down with their cigar, you're not sitting over them and watching them, you're not babysitting them. You know, it's really just the person, the people that are coming in through the door that you're actively selling to, those are, those are the people that you actively sell to.
It's your business, I assume you're gonna be the manager.
Yeah.
So obviously, if the need is there for another part-timer.
Absolutely.
You're gonna get it. How, how large is the humidor? I might be asking this for personal.
We have a, we have a map of it here. It looks to be at least 1,000 square feet on here. It's gonna be a very nice, it's gonna be a very nice humidor, so, yeah, yeah.
Just another question for the applicant, but just a point of, point of clarity. There is a drop-off area, but it's not what's required under the ordinance, which is, I believe, 12 by 35 feet.
Right.
But there is a drop-off area that will accommodate a FedEx or a UPS, so I needed to make, but the engineer will testify to that, Mr. Ali. And just one more question. Trog, as far as, we're not proposing a trash enclosure, so talk about how, how trash will be handled.
Yeah, so as we do now, we just, we have a cleaning service come in, just because cigar stores need to be cleaned, and so that's the easiest way to do it. It ensures the space stays spotless at all times.
And how often does that happen?
Cleaning service will be coming in every day.
Okay, and they take, okay, fair enough.
They remove everything, bottles, if there's, everything, okay?
Right, so.
Nothing further, but go ahead.
Another question. It's in terms of security. I mean, is this like an open business? You come in or you have to be buzzed in, or just?
So...
Like, how do you handle with your other, with your other?
So the retail area is public space, you know, that's, you walk in through the door, you're within the retail space. When it comes to the sampling room, you have to purchase a cigar, so staff will walk you through. It's not like somebody could just walk into that space by themselves, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And do you, I mean, towards the holiday season, do you sell ashtrays, lighters, all that?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Do you sell other products, you know, the ashtray?
Yeah, ashtrays, lighters, humidor, cutters, all of that stuff, so, yeah. Golf caddy stuff, golf, so, like, we got everything.
I'm just thinking, I mean...
Sure, sure. So, listen, when we open up, I know you'll be at the door waiting for us to open.
Yeah, but...
One person's gonna be helping someone bring in a register that maybe gift wrapping, you know, "Dad loves my cigars." Okay, but you'll figure it out.
Yes, absolutely.
So I have nothing further for the applicant.
So if we wanna, you wanna bring up, I guess...
Absolutely. Mr. Ali, if you would, Sharif? Thanks, Trog. Don't go anywhere. Sir, could you raise your right hand, please, when you're ready? Thank you. With regard to this application, do you state that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Can you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Sharif Ali, A-L-Y.
Thank you. Sharif, you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And by whom are you employed?
Amertech Engineering.
And what capacity do you work for Amertech?
I'm the president of Amertech Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sharif, I know you've prepared a site plan. Give the board the benefit of your engineering testimony, if you would.
Yeah, so I guess most of the board members are familiar with the site. We're on Aaron Road, not too far from Costco and the movie theater. We're in that crowded area there. So we're about 400 feet plus, 400-plus feet from State Highway Route 1. So between us and the State Highway, we have Aaron Plaza as a retail shopping area, and then you have the bank, which was just recently constructed. And we're all familiar with Brunswick Bank. They had a few, I would say, branches, about four or five of them, and they all closed, and it's been closed for two years. So back in 1998, the end of 98, was an application for the bank, for the Gaminas family, and at that time, the board approved the site plan application. That was in 1999, the beginning of 99. And what you see out there is what we're gonna be using. We're not modifying anything on the outside, with the exception of the drive-thru. We're gonna be enclosing that. So the drive-thru has a roof, has one wall, so there is three walls. We're gonna be closing that. So that's basically the area. So technically, under construction definition of a building, we're not really doing an addition, we're just enclosing that drive-thru. But as far as closing the drive-thru, we are creating two landscaping areas in the front of the addition, in the front and in the back, and that will reduce the impervious coverage on site by 230 square feet. Big deal, but will be reduced. Some landscaping will be added, so that's the only modification that we're doing to the site. But I do have a copy of, and thank you to the town, Sal Provaci. This is what was being approved. That's one acre site, and at the time when the site was approved, this area was in the transitional mixed-use. And I believe last year or the year before, the area changed to C2. So the transitional mixed-use has no requirement whatsoever as far as front setbacks, side setbacks. The only requirement was the two acre for the lot area. We have about one acre. The C2 zone now, it's only half acre, so we're meeting all the requirements. However, at the time when it was approved, when the bank was approved, it was about 46.3 feet from the right-of-way. The C2 zone is going for 60 feet, which, again, recently just been in place.
Excuse me, this map is part of our submission package, right? Yeah, okay.
As well as the resolution, too.
Just wanted to make sure. Yeah, it's part of our, part of the submission package.
Right. There's two driveways, so we have the frontage on Aaron Road. There's two driveways, one for ingress and one for egress. It's just a typical bank layout that you see out there, one-way circulations, with the exception of the front area. I see out there is, it could be two-way circulation, but we have our traffic consulting, can you speak to that? Again, far lane signage is already out there. It's a bank. Lights, outdoor lights, it's already out there. They have four lights, and would you imagine a bank, you know, so they have to have a good lights out there. Landscaping, at the time when it's in operation, they have a perfect landscaping out there, so the site has been neglected for the last two or three years, so refurbished, we will do a good job on the landscaping. The pavement onsite, okay, you get some cracks, some weeds coming out, so that will be also resurfaced. So that's as far as that. Sewer and water, gas, electric, is already there. So the only thing that we're doing is that we modifying the area, and I see in the applications being called an addition on my site plan, just for lack of a better word, but in reality, we're just closing that area. So I don't want to repeat myself, but it's a one-way circulation. You have, was approved back in 99, with 12 feet one-way in, opens up to 18, opens up in the back area to 24 because of 90-degree parking, and then comes out between the, the drive-thru and the curb lines, only 12 feet. We're not changing that. There's a sign as you go in, it says, "No trucks, no box trucks," because the height of the canopy, it's only 10 feet. Again, we're not changing that. So everything is still the same, the detention basin is still the same, but as a result of enclosing the drive-thru, we created, as I said before, the landscape area, reduced the impervious coverage, but also allowed for additional three spaces. So the bank was approved with 13, you said 14, but that's okay. So it was approved by 13, and now we're gonna have 16 spaces. One of the spaces on the site plan, we called it a drop-off area for FedEx, and you heard the operation, they start at 11, so they can have their drop-off at 10, and then that space will be used as part of the 16. And one of the spaces is ADA space. If you go out there, you'll see two of them, but we figured out, as far as the requirement for ADA, we only need one, so we're only gonna be using one ADA. We will look at the landing area to make sure for the ADA, that make sure that meets the requirement, the current requirement, so there will be a minor reconstruction of the sidewalk in this area and make sure that an ADA person will come to the, to the door. Pretty much, that's it. That's the site plan application.
I have one, I have one question. You stated that you're gonna enclose the drive-thru. Will that space then be used for part of the, the walk-in humidor, or will, what will that space be used for once it's enclosed?
Yeah, that's a sampling area, yeah. You heard the testimony before, you heard that the addition, the addition to the building is about 1,000 square feet. That, that is the area, yeah. And you also heard about the, and we do a... And you also heard about the, and we do agree with Mr. Watson, that we have pre-existing condition variances. We have three of them, so not to be repetitive, but you heard that the front setback, 46.3, the new zone C2 is 60. You heard that we, four feet from the street line to the first five parking spaces, and by the way, in the ordinance, in the resolution, was approved for three feet. So there is an improvement of, great, good for landscaping. So you, and you heard about the parking. If you go straight forward into the C2 zone, one per 200 square feet, you need 20 spaces. We were successful on adding three more, so now we have 16. So we're about four spaces short, and Mr. Miskovich will speak to that. And you heard about the sign, the sign, the height is, we find was the height, and that's the way it was approved, 12 feet high. The square footage, we meeting that, as far as the ordinance requirement, but back in 1999, the distance from the street line, the ordinance goes for 20, and it still goes for 20, was approved for, at that time, for four. We have, I don't know how, somehow they have six now. But that variance is pre-existing. So most of the items are pre-existing, with the exception of the, and Mr. Toto talked about that, is the, the ordinance goes for loading area. We don't have a loading area, we just have a drop-off area, and I did speak on that. And as far as Mr. Watson's report, we will comply with all the items in his report.
Any questions for Mr. Watson?
I just have a question about, could you show me where that drop-off area is that you're proposing for, for the trucks? I'm just trying to.
So if you have on sheet two of two.
Yeah.
So you're going in one way, you make that 90-degree turn, and you come, as you're coming into the area where it used to be the, the drive-through, it's a last space at the end. And it's about nine by 20, that will fit a FedEx.
So.
The FedEx can come, you know, again, before 11 o'clock.
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. Do you, do you think it's realistic that FedEx is gonna come to the back of the store, one? And then, two, we noted in our report, you know, that area, I'm concerned with that back southern corner, where we're going from 24 feet down to that 12-foot aisle. So I'm just wondering if you've run circulation templates through there, if we're not gonna have any, you know, conflict in that corner? That's one of our comments, and I just want to make sure we review the circulation in that area.
So I do have an exhibits, you wanna mark it?
Mr. Chairman, can you mark this exhibit, I guess, A1?
Sure.
Yes.
This is a van circulation exhibit for Mega International.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sorry.
On. I'd like to mark as A1, the van circulation exhibit for Mega International. I can't, can you read the date, Sharif? It's like the smallest print I've ever seen.
You want a magnet handrail?
In any event.
6/11. It's 6/11.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, here you go. How about that? Oh, wow, everyone's going, what's going on? August 11th.
Dated August 11th, 2025.
Yeah.
As A1.
And maybe every two will take one.
So that space does provide, it is a little larger than the other spaces?
Yes.
Is that the idea? Okay.
It's crazy. It's two feet longer, in fact, right?
Yes.
It's a 20-foot. I agree with Mr. Watson, though. I don't know why a FedEx truck wouldn't just come into the main entrance, make a left-hand turn, just one way, stop and drop it off right out front. I mean, that's logically what would happen to me. I don't know why they would circulate around the building and park in that last spot.
But what is your width in the front? Like, what is, I know it's a one-way aisle there, but it looks like it's oversized, right? Like, from curb to, you know, the line, if you draw a line at the back end of the parking stalls, what is that dimension?
So the parking space is in the front, the nine by 18, and the aisle is 24.
So you do have a 24-foot aisle there, even though you're using it as one-way?
As one-way, you can have a drop-off there.
Right.
So thinking about it, you probably don't need the variance. You can designate the area as a drop-off area, and you will get the 12 by 35, because one-way in the ordinance, I believe, is 12. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you really don't need a variance on that. Here you go, you figured it out.
I didn't follow that.
So.
So the width in the front of the store is one-way? I'm sorry, the circulation's one-way in the front?
Right.
But the width is more than what you need for one-way? The width is 24 feet?
Yes, so we can designate an area, therefore, drop-off.
So that's wide enough to enable a FedEx to pull up along the front there?
Correct.
And, but you still, but, but see, but a one-way driveway only needs to be 12 feet, but that's not when you have 90-degree angle parking off of it, Jim?
So I was thinking the same thing, Tom, but there.
Because with a FedEx truck there, you know, if.
There is a spot that isn't directly behind the parking, maybe they can look at trying to designate that area?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Sharif, might that work?
Yeah, just, Tom, keep in mind that the store will open early, but it's open for customers at 11:00, so they, they always can have FedEx come in the morning until 11:00.
But they can't always control that, so that, the concern is legit. I understand what you're saying, but, right, they can come at 1:30, at noon. So is it worth checking out a spot in the back? Is that?
It's the same scenario, whether it's in the front or in the back, it's 24 feet wide.
Can you come in the front and then immediately turn left and go down that one-way? Or is that a curb? That's.
Can you come in the front? Yeah, I think that's what we were talking about before. Yes.
Come in and then go to the left?
Yeah.
So, well, how do you prevent FedEx from, you know, going to the back, or, I mean, not coming and doing that, coming to the front and stopping there and?
We can add, we can add some. Usually, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, once they get accustomed to how we operate, they know what.
And then the other question is, you know, God forbid, if there's any type of fire or anything like that, I'm assuming that there is enough space for, you know, fire trucks to come in and, if there's something going on in the back of the building, that there's enough space for them to turn around these vents and?
The site will, as I stated before, there's a sign out there, because the canopy and the height, you cannot have more than, they not allow for, the site itself not allow for box trucks or any trailers, you know, type of vehicles.
I'm talking about.
But we talking about, you're talking about a fire truck, if it's a small fire truck.
If there's something going on in the back of the building, and they need to get back there, is the road enough to accommodate, you know, a fire truck vehicle, to get that emergency vehicle to get back?
Emergency vehi, yes, you're talking about first aid, ambulance, police, but a fire truck, no, I, I.
Fire truck.
No, it's not, a fire truck wouldn't be able to get inside. That's the way it was designed back in 99, that's the way it was approved. And I believe we also have a report from the fire department.
Okay.
That they, they have no comments, because they've been, they've been serving that from the outside.
So they won't be able to get?
No, no, the building's only about 46 feet from the street line.
Okay, just curious.
I have, I have a question about the, the circulation plan. I'm just looking at Google Earth here, and the, if you're coming south on Route One, if you're coming south on Route One and you get off, the, it drops you off at Aaron Road, you know, opposite the Aaron Plaza Shopping Center. To get to, to get to the cigar store, you'd make a right-hand turn, correct, Sharif? You're coming south on One, you take the exit, you come at a stop sign, you'd make a right and then a left into the cigar store?
Correct.
Correct. But your turning, your, your, your turning movement shows, shows trucks coming from the other direction and swinging wide, when trucks coming off of Route One would be coming up Aaron Road and they'd be going in the, in the other direction. Is there any reason why you're showing the movement in this? Jim, why is, why is the movement shown as if the traffic's coming from?
Because that will be the difficult one to do.
What was that?
That will be the difficult one to do, coming from, from west, coming into Route One, trying to get into the site. So if you have a FedEx in the area as in making that turn, that's a difficult one. But coming from Route One, making a right, and then making a 90-degree in, that's an easy one.
Yeah, no, but I'm saying, so you, you showed this maneuver, because I think you showed the, the wide swing, you showed that as the more difficult.
The more difficult, yes.
Because logically, the delivery.
It, exactly, yes.
Probably coming off, coming off of Route One, okay.
Right.
I didn't understand why it was shown from that direction. Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
You know what, Mr. Chairman, if I may, one more question, Sharif. We mentioned a fence earlier, and we acquiesced, we said we would install a fence. Do you have any suggestions as to height, type, location, exactly?
So there's two fences out there. There is a chain link fence, I believe it's about four feet or five feet high, that separate the bank from Aaron Plaza. And there is a fence in the back, that's a split rail, white fence, which just meant to be for protection of the wooded area and the wetlands. The, there's only one side left, which is going down on Aaron Road. That whole entire area, I think it belongs to the town, it's all wooded and would never be developed, it's all wet. So there is a fence out there.
Are any of the fences in disrepair, Sharif, particularly the one that is, creates the buffer between this property and, because I wasn't sure what we were agreeing to before, and now I'm questioning.
Can you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry, I'm, I don't want to be, sound nefarious or go back on our word here. I was not, I was unclear whether there was an existing fence separating this property from Aaron Plaza. Is any of that fence in disrepair? And if it is, what would our plan be to, to repair? I mean, what's the condition of?
It's the same thing like we're gonna do for the landscaping, for the parking area, if the fence is leaning or is broken, it will be fixed.
We put a white resin fence up.
You wanna put a white fence?
Can we just cover it with a white resin fence on and move on?
It's up to the board. If you want to.
Going through the chain link fence.
So Aaron Plaza has parking spaces facing into, right?
Correct, yes.
All right, so let's not make those 10 additional spaces at this point, right?
That's fine, if the, if that's the board wishes, yeah, that's fine. We're not talking about, you're probably talking about 100 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that. And to correct.
Wait, just so, just so I'm clear, we're talking about 100 feet of board-on-board fence? Of new board-on-board fence? And replacing the chain link? Just?
Yes, just a typical white vinyl.
Talking about a white vinyl fence?
Yeah.
You know what you're talking about?
Whatever the industrial.
Yeah.
And in linear, it's 100 linear feet, that's, that's the length of the fence that we're talking about? I just want to be clear, Mr. Watson.
Yeah, I, I think we.
I don't know the length, I mean, that, that whole side, I believe, is 178 feet for that whole side.
But I believe that in the front area, we're not gonna do anything, the front yard, that's about closer to 46 feet.
Okay.
I believe your ordinance permits three feet high in the front area. So we're gonna start from the building, the building face all the way to the back.
Well, right now, I believe it extends further towards the road, and if the, if the intent is to prevent.
Oh, there's a fence on the.
Kind of cross, people parking in one side and walking through.
Right.
I think we'd have to extend it closer to Aaron.
Sure, then we can, maybe we'll start three feet high, so not to get into a variance situation, and then soon as we hit the parking spaces on the adjacent property, we'll go four feet high.
Oh, I didn't know that, Robert.
That's 100 feet?
So we'll be 50 and another 100, so 150 feet.
Okay. Do you recommend that, Mr. Watson? Because we're okay with that.
Well, the chairman wants that.
No, I know he does, I just wanted to get.
I think the chairman, the chairman concern is the parking spaces.
Actually, that is a good question, so.
Here you go.
So there's a private, there's a, there's a sampling room, a lounge area, well, like 14 seats, and then we got the ultra-private room. You don't have to tell us what goes on in the ultra-private room, but no. So you have two rooms, you have two private rooms in the facility?
Yeah, the sampling room and the private sampling room.
There are two private rooms in the facility?
Well, that's fine, is it for employees only?
Trug, why don't you get back up to the microphone while this question?
Yeah, whoever's gonna answer that.
Yeah.
So typically, when it comes to the private sampling room area, it'll just be an area where I have meetings, I take, you know, private clients, I have people from the trade shows that will come to meet me, manufacturers and stuff like that, so I have a space.
Not open to the general public?
Yes.
Fair enough. So I, well, I'm not gonna tell you how to run your business. I just don't understand why you wanna, wanna have.
Yeah, it, it's basically like my private.
If you have five or six business people that want to come in and sample a couple different cigars.
Right.
I mean, I don't know why you wouldn't want to do that?
Right.
But that's your business.
And one, one other question before you go down, is the, is the private locker room, is that where, because people bring their own alcohol, like, somebody will bring a bottle of Glenfiddich or something to leave in the locker room there because they like to drink?
It'll be for, it'll be for cigars.
What was that?
Cigars.
Oh, they, oh, so they can't.
It's a cigar locker room.
So each time somebody's coming in with a bottle of bourbon or scotch or something, they have to, they just, they drive in, they just carry the bottle in with them?
They, they bring in the bottle with them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's how BYOB.
No, no, what, what?
They self-flask that, but yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because I, I was also, not to drunk an hour and a half.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not to drunk an hour and a half drunk bottle of Maker's Mark.
Right, right, right.
You know?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Thank you, thank you. You wanna call the?
I recommend the trunk.
Just, just, I wanna correct myself, I just misspoke before. The adjacent lot to the west is not a township lot, I'm looking at the list of property owner within 20 feet. It's privately owned, but I, I do stand that it's fully wooded and majority is wetlands.
Okay, nothing further for Mr. Ali on my end, but of course, if the board.
Can you lean into the mic, please?
Yeah, nothing further for Mr. Ali from, from my perspective, but if the board has any other questions, he's not going anywhere either. So at this point, we'll call Kurt Ludwig, our project architect. Oh, Mr. Watson, that's a question.
Just to finish our fence discussion, I don't know if we wrapped that up.
Where are we going here?
So we were gonna look to do a four-foot fence along that property line between Aaron Plaza and, and Brunswick Bank, that are between the site? You were gonna go three feet, so that we don't obstruct any.
Right.
Distances, I guess?
Correct.
We start with three feet, soon as we hit the parking spaces.
We'll go to four.
Mr. Concern, yeah, concerned, then we'll go four feet from there.
Okay. And, and I'm not sure if we heard any testimony on, I know you said you're gonna enclose that drive-through area, but architecturally, what, what is that gonna look like? Is it gonna be glass or masonry, or do we have an architect on?
Yeah, we do. Mr. Ludwig will testify next, Mr. Watson, yes.
So then I only have, I guess, one, couple more site questions. So you'll identify the area, pavement. So you'll identify the area pavement restoration on the plans, because that's not really identified.
We can do that, pavement restoration on the, on the plan, on the revision?
Yeah, I visited the site today, and, uh, yeah, you have some weeds going through the pavement, so we're.
It'll be on the plan.
Will, will be on the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, will be a note on the plan.
Okay, all right. And you're also gonna look at the ADA, um.
Absolutely, yeah.
Throughout the site.
Yeah, it's not meeting the current, you know, standard, yes.
And I just, I, I just wanna understand how these, um, handicap or ADA spaces will work. Are they gonna be van accessible? And right now, they look like they're parallel, which is somewhat unusual.
Yeah, but, uh, they meet the ADA requirement as far, as far as van accessible.
For van accessible?
Yes.
Okay, fine. And right now, it's set up for two, you said you'd at least provide one.
Yeah, we don't need two, we only need one.
So what would you do with the other area?
Will be just a regular space.
Okay, all right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Kurt, if you would.
Sir, could you raise your right hand, please?
With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give Shelby the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Kurt Ludwig, L-U-D-W-I-G.
Thank you. Kurt, give the board the benefit of your CVA, please.
It's working.
And.
Hello? Testing, testing.
Jesus.
Battery's going out. Hello? Okay. I'm sorry, what was the question?
Give the board the benefit of your CVA, your license.
Sure, Kurt Ludwig, registered architect. Um, my office is in Milltown, New Jersey, since 1991. My degree is from Arizona State University. I've testified in front of numerous boards, including this board.
Mr. Chairman?
We'll accept it.
I, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So Kurt, I know you've prepared a elevations and the floor plan, both of which have been submitted with the application package. Uh, if you would, let's go through the.
Sure.
Floor plan, thanks.
Um, I'm going to rehash a lot of what's been said already. This is a floor plan of the building. As stated, it's a, a former bank building, one-story in height, uh, it's constructed of masonry and steel. The main building is here. Main building has two existing entrances, one facing Aaron Road in the front parking lot, and the second facing the rear parking lot. We've talked about converting this existing drive-through and enclosing it under the, underneath the existing roof. Um, we're reconfiguring, uh, a lot of the interior, we're keeping some of it. Um, we have our retail space here, our sampling areas, our locker room here, and then our private sampling room in the front.
What about the features, Mr. Watson asked, had a question about the, uh, the facade features of the, uh, of the enclosure?
So, this is, uh, the outside of the building, the, the drawing at the top is our front elevation. The existing building. Thank you. Um, the top drawing is our front elevation, the existing building is here. Again, it's constructed of masonry and metal. Um, the existing building includes this, includes this horizontal band, including going over the existing drive-through, we're going to repaint that with the tobacco leaf colors. The enclosure at the existing drive-through will include stucco to complement the existing masonry, and it will also include windows, which will match the style of the existing building. The windows at the left side will be fixed. Uh, again, we're repurposing the existing stucco colors to match the new tobacco leaf brand.
Great, great. I have nothing further for Mr. Ludwig.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, on, okay, maybe you've answered the question. Yeah, I think you've answered the question.
Good.
Is that the name of all the stores, or?
This, yeah, just, the, the windows that you have, um, on the end there.
Here.
Are they operable?
Correct, the windows in the front.
Yeah.
And then the rear open, and that's where we're proposing, uh, some additional landscaping. The windows on the left side will be fixed, and we did that to tie into the look of the existing windows here.
Why, why are, if, if this is a room that's like, temperature is sensitive, I guess, um, because it's a, it's a sampling room, it's not?
That's the sampling room.
That's the sampling room.
But that's where they're gonna be smoking.
So this is where there's be smoking, so why are the windows operable? I'm just curious, if you have a ventilation system that's supposed to be.
Nope, he shouldn't answer.
No, he can't answer, no, he's, no, no.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
He may come up and answer.
He can come up, but he shouldn't.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, yeah. Sure, yeah, he's new at this, uh, Mr. Vig, I'm sorry about that.
Great. Fresh air?
But we did testify earlier about fixed windows.
Yes.
Leading to Aaron Plaza, correct?
Correct.
So, Kurt, just for the board and, and for the Aaron Plaza people, where are the fixed, the fixed windows face, uh, Aaron Plaza, correct?
Correct, and, and the reasoning for that was, uh, that is adjacent to a drive-through aisle. I didn't want the windows to open into the drive-through, and I, I thought it would be nice to have some windows that would operate. And the style of those windows, even though they open, they match the style and sizing of the existing building.
And they, they face the front and the rear?
Correct.
Okay. And the side is fixed?
Yes.
Yes.
And so there shouldn't be any issue with residuals, people who are smoking in there, and that smoke coming out? And then, just curious.
Can I answer that?
Please.
Yes.
So, when it comes to ventilation, it's a certain amount of pressure that we create that will suck the air out, so, it, no, even if we open the windows, there's still static pressure that we're creating that is pushing air through to the roof, so, that's how all of our lounges operate.
Any other other locations have, what is that? From a security, from a security point, if you, is that?
Well, I mean, it's glass, right? So, even in our other, like in Robbinsville, we have glass as well, I mean, if somebody really wanted to break in, they can break in through glass.
Did you have windows that open, I thought was your, wasn't that your question? Do you, do they have windows that open in your other locations?
We don't have windows that open, but, uh, it's just different design in this, in this store location.
I'm not, I'm not understanding it.
I said, we don't have windows in other locations, uh, but the store design is slightly different in this location, you know? We thought it'd be a nice feature to add to our customer.
You have outside smoking in other locations?
Yes, we do.
Correct?
Yeah.
And this one won't have outside?
Correct.
No, this won't have outside smoking. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
No, nothing further for Mr. Ludwig, no.
Thank you, Chairman.
Jim, are you? Yeah, just to ask a couple of questions about the utility design, like, with the addition, do you have to alter any fire suppression or water system or plumbing for additional bathrooms? I'm just, wanna make sure that your, your existing services will meet the needs of the site.
Okay, so the building is not fire sprinkled, it's not required to be.
Okay.
For the bank or for this use. Um, the two existing bathrooms meet barrier-free code, and, uh, the, the count of the fixtures is the same as when it was a bank. Um, and we're, the utilities are sufficient there for, for this use.
Okay.
Do we have a report from, uh, from Traffic Safety or DPW on this use, or?
Um, I don't believe Traffic Safety provided a report.
I don't believe so.
They did not. What was the other one, Tom?
Uh, you know, just, uh, I know we had, we have comments in the Environmental Commission, I didn't know if we had anything from fire, from fire safety or traffic safety.
Uh, Fire Safety says, Fire Marshal needs to see plan for proposed fire lanes as well as plan for fire land sign locations, signs should face direction of travel.
Okay.
And that's acceptable, of course.
There's no other questions from the board? Like to open it up to the public? Motion to open it to the public?
I do have one more witness, Mr. Chairman, but that's.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
Big traffic incident.
Yes, yes, Frank, if you would.
13 spots for her.
Yeah, I know, we're trying to have, a little overkill.
I'm gonna try this mic and hope it works.
We'll get through it.
We can make it quick.
Could you raise your right hand, please, sir, with regard to this application? You swear the testimony you're about to give Shelby the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name.
It's Frank Miskovich, spelled M-I-S-K-O-V-I-C-H.
Thank you.
I'm a licensed professional engineer, uh, my license is, uh, still ballot. I have a Bachelor's of Science, Master's of Science degree in civil engineering.
We'll accept it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I know Tom probably just as long as I've been here.
If you could just keep, the sounds, just lean into the mic as you're talking.
How about, I'll do it that way.
Makes a all the difference in the world.
I would say it was difficult hearing back there. Okay. Uh, let me start out with traffic. Uh, we did submit a report dated July 29th to the board. Unfortunately, I didn't get, I didn't get a copy over to your engineer, uh, but I believe the board does have it. When I first started this, we looked at Aaron Road, and I said, well, this might be under DOT jurisdiction, because they've reconstructed the jug handle there. They did not have a new jurisdictional map, so I took the presumption that it's gonna be under DOT jurisdiction for our site driveway. With that said, we need a new permit for, an application to DOT if we have a change of use that generates more than 100 trips in the peak hour, or if we're doing any work in the driveways or construction within their right-of-way. We are not doing the latter. And as you've heard the testimony, that the applicant sees 10 to 15 people throughout the whole day, obviously, that does not get to the credit of the 100, 100 peak hour trips. I know it's hard to believe, but that's what it is. But we did submit a request for a letter of no interest to DOT on July 22nd, we're still waiting for that. But just to have that said, for DOT, we compared traffic of the bank to a shopping center and to a specialty retail, because it could be a retail use, which part of this is, and it's substantially reduced from what the bank generates, so it's a very low traffic generator. We then looked at the parking supply, as obviously, we were looking for a variance from 20 to 16 spaces. So with the enclosure of the sampling room, of the, uh, drive-through windows, that's 4,000 square feet, we need 20 spaces. But you've heard the testimony, that sampling area doesn't have any retail sales whatsoever, it's just simply for testing, or it's sampling cigars. So, in my opinion, you could consider that ancillary use to the retail component, and if I just looked at the 3,000 square foot retail portion, I would need 15 spaces, and we have 16, so we would be okay with that. But I took it a step further, I then looked at the parking demand, what this might be. And you've heard testimony, about six to 10 people on a day, weekday, 10 to 15 throughout a Saturday or weekend-type activity. I went one step further, I said, look, these are short stays, five to 10 minutes for the customers. That means I can come into a parking space with 10 minutes, someone else can come into that parking space, so there's a turnover rate. And if I look over that time, and how many times that space can turn over, I can get maybe 98 vehicles that I can service in one hour. What I did was, I took, let's assume that all 10 people are coming in for the, uh, sales in one hour, and there's about six people in this sampling room in the same one hour, their total daily in one hour. And so I looked at five-minute and 10-minute turnover rates for retail, I looked at 30 minutes to 60 minutes for the sampling area. And when I look over that turnover rate, with everybody in that one hour, I'm having five to 10 spaces occupied with that type of intensity. When with 16 spaces, I think there's more than adequate. Uh, we've got only one employee, so if I have that one employee out of there, I have 15 spaces that would service both operations. So this use, I think, is a very low traffic generator, very low parking generator, so, and I think that the, the parking variance could be granted, especially considering that the sampling area is not really retail sales.
And just to be clear, 'cause people are probably thinking, well, what the heck are they selling in there? If there's 10 to 12 people coming a day?
I'm sorry.
People are probably wondering, what are you, what are you selling, besides cigars, if there's only 10 or 12 people that visit the store per day? So I believe you'd be probably on hourly, you know, you get more than 10 people in there a day, you're open from 11 to 8 o'clock at night?
Uh, sure, if you're gonna speak, just couldn't sit next to Frank, but indicate the, uh, give, give the board a sense of, these are, I understand, Mr. Chairman, they are premium cigars, so what, what's the cost of a box, a cigar?
Typically, when it comes to cigars, uh, you know, we have between, let's say, like, between 10 and 15 people max in a day that will show up, because the average purchase of a cigar is, you know, like, the average purchase, uh, or ticket is anywhere from like 50 to 75 to $100.
Per, per sale?
Per person.
Right.
Right? So it's, we're not really doing, like, we're not doing.
You do any more, I mean, it doesn't matter, okay.
But again.
I'm sorry, 50, 50, $75 per person, times 10 persons, only 750 bucks a day, what am I missing?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
So, so you can.
Family-run business, they're.
Yeah, it's a.
I don't understand how many businesses.
I, I work, I work a ton of hours.
750 dollars a day in revenue, all right.
Yeah.
So, to that point, then.
Yeah.
You do not, you do not ship mail order out of this location, correct?
Not out of this location, no, yeah.
Do you see that change? Mail order out of this location?
No, I will never mail out of this loca-, it just doesn't make sense, we have a, our Robbinsville location has a post office next to it, and so, we do all of our shipping out of there.
Okay.
But may I add to Tom's point, uh, the fact, even if you had those 10 people coming out one hour, they're spending a very short time in there, so those spaces are turning over anyway. Uh, when I used to smoke years ago, you know, you know what you're smoking, I think that they go, and I'm gonna buy this, 'cause I'm running out, um, sometimes maybe wanna try another sample, so you're not spending a lot of time with that type of thing, so I mean, that's just the oper-, nature of the, the operation.
Great, thanks, Frank, nothing further.
Any other questions?
Yes, will you have TVs in the?
Will you have, will you have TVs in the sampling room? And the reason why I'm asking is typically, when you have TVs in a sampling room, um, more people tend to congregate for longer periods of time. They're smoking, they're drinking, they're watching sports, they could be there for an hour before they have to go. So, will you have TVs in the sampling room?
We do, and if I, if I tell you about our current locations, which also have TVs, it, it doesn't raise traffic that much, uh, to the point where.
Financial channel?
Huh? We do, and if I, if I tell you about our current locations, which also have TVs, it, it doesn't raise traffic that much, to the point where...
Financial channel?
Huh? Yeah, we only have the History Channel, actually, and, you know, so most people get pretty bored.
You go up to the club and sit there every 10 hours, smoke and drink.
Yeah. No, but it hasn't posed an issue for us, and I think with our turnover rate, we don't generally have those issues. And we have a limited number of seats anyway, so it's, it shouldn't be a problem.
I, I have one question, actually. Your hours, you close at 8:30?
Yeah.
So if you have people that are in the sampling room at that time, do they have to leave at 8:30, or do they stay later? Because I'm just looking at the report from Mr. Miskovich on page 3. It says that during the evening hours, excuse me, the peak hours of the cigar sampling area are typically during the evening hours after work and dinner with no more than 10 customers after 8:30 PM.
Yeah.
So that suggests that people do stay long?
We have, we have members who are able to stay past opening hours, but again, those, those members are limited, and it's capped, again. It's a cap membership.
Okay, so is there a certain hour, though, when you say, "This is it, we're done"?
We're 24/7 for our members.
24/7?
Yeah.
So you could have members in your building at any time during the day?
During the day, yes, but typically, most of our members show up in the evenings after work.
I think we have to provide a, a time limit here.
I'm just...
No. No, it's not 24/7.
Right, right, right.
So a member can come in at 2 o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, I mean, some people work...
I'm just...
Some, some people work really late shifts, you know? We have guys that, you know, work construction, and, you know, they get off and they want to have a smoke before they go home.
So the retail portion is only closed at 8:30?
Correct.
And the, the other part, they have access to that 1 smoking room area?
Yes.
Where the drive-through, where your building, where the drive-through is currently?
Correct.
Okay, and so that's why there's also doors there?
Correct.
Wow.
Yes, it's also a safety issue. You need to have doors there just for egress.
And you don't have an employee there at that time? It's just the members can...
Just the members.
Have free access to go in and out?
Yeah. And we have security cameras throughout the building, so it's not an issue.
What's, what's the cap on membership, then, Sharag?
Like we said, we have a cap on membership for 15 people for the members' area.
And how often do these members use the sampling room after 8:30?
Again, I don't, even with our current locations, we don't have 15 people show up all at once. It's, would be very rare for that to happen. Typically, on an average night, we have between 6 to 10 people, you know, in the, in the back room, so, after 8:30.
And is, do they pay a premium for that membership?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Is it like a monthly, I'm not familiar with this, so...
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a yearly contract, so it's...
A yearly contract?
It's a yearly contract. Think of it as getting country-club membership at a golf course. It's not something everybody's signing up for.
So I, I just wanted to understand, I'm, I'm curious, so it's, it's open to, certain members have the ability to access it 24 hours a day?
Correct.
They all have a fob or something, or a combination?
Sure.
That, that they can get in 24 hours a day?
Right.
And you've got everything under surveillance, and, and all your supplies and everything are tightly locked up, so they only have access to their locker and to the...
Absolutely.
To the joint, to the joint sampling?
Absolutely.
To the joint sampling area?
Yes. Yeah, we've, I've been, we've tested the system for the past 7 years. We know how it works well. It's a, we're a well-oiled machine at this point.
And it, it's not like, it's not like your typical Monday-night football crowd that's going in to smoke cigars, if that's...
No, the price is too high for that.
What is that?
The price is too high for that.
Right.
But they can bring alcohol in with them?
It is BYOB.
Do they bring, are they allowed to bring guests? I'm just curious.
No.
It's just for them?
Correct.
So you would see it on camera if they had?
Yes.
Somebody else that goes in with them, and then you, I guess you deal with them accordingly?
Can they bring weed into smoking?
No.
Is legal in New Jersey? No?
I've kicked, I've kicked members out and customers out for smoking cigarettes on premise, so...
Okay.
We don't even allow any cigarettes on premise.
How dare they smoke a cigarette in his car lap?
It's an infamy.
We're very strict about that, so...
How dare they? I'm good.
Any other questions for me?
Nothing further.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to open the application to the public?
I move, we open it to the public.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rosalyn Westlake. I'm an attorney in Lambertville. I'm here on behalf of the owners of Aaron Plaza, and I have spoken very briefly with Mr. Toto. The owner's name is Centone LLC, hence the attorney representing them. Thank you for the presentation, very thorough, very clear. Appreciate that. Just a couple of questions that it wasn't clear to me. There was talk of the venting system and this vacuum pressure, you know, obviously to prevent the smoke from escaping when you open a window, but where does it go overall? If it's, it must be vented outside, so it, what if any kind of venting or, or control is there with respect to the smoke that escapes the building?
Sure. Kurt, are you best equipped to answer this question? Yeah, Sharag, if you would?
So the, the venting of all the smoke goes to the roof, like I mentioned earlier, and then the smoke, because it's heated, will rise into the atmosphere. So it's not usually an issue, and we currently operate within residential units above us, and we, we actually pass through, you know, 6 floors to vent to the roof there above those units, and we've had no problems in the past 10 years, so...
So you don't scrub it, it's not scrubbed at all?
You don't need to scrub it because we changed the filters. Yeah.
So you're telling me that there are filters on the vent system so that when it escapes, or when it leaves the building and goes outside, it's going through a filter of some sort? Okay, but in the...
I thought you said it wasn't, wasn't filtered, or you said you don't have scrubber. I'm confused.
A scrubber is different.
Oh, oh, okay.
A scrubber is totally different, but each, each HVAC systems come with filters. You know, they're, they're inbuilt to the system, and you just replace them, you know, every 6 months.
It's your basic HVAC filter.
Right.
It's not a special filter for cigar smoke, right? It's just a normal HVAC.
It's a normal filter, and it filters out the smoke, and it does an adequate job, otherwise I'd have residents above me complaining.
Okay. I'm sorry, just logistically, I'm trying to figure this out, because you said it goes through 6 floors of residential?
Yes, because we are...
Okay, but it's...
It's vented to the roof.
No, no, but I, I understand, so I guess my question is that it's escaping to the air significantly higher up in Robbinsville than it is here. And I think the concern is, it's, how tall is the building? Maybe 20 feet tall? The, the smoke's gonna be coming out at the height of 20 feet, not at the height of 6 floors, correct?
Right, but Princeton's also at the height of 20 feet, and we have no problems, and we have, we have actually stricter standards because we have Jersey Mike's, which is a national chain, and we have to comply with our lease, you know, with all of those standards. So we already meet and exceed those standards, as well as because we operate in a stricter township like West Windsor, where, you know, we're, we're very on top of making sure that smoke isn't a secondary hazard to anybody.
Rosalyn, if you don't, sure, Jersey Mike's is where? Adjacent to the store in Princeton?
Adjacent.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I know exactly where you are. I'm familiar with the area. I guess I would respectfully request that the board maybe explore whatever the stricter restrictions are for the West Windsor location and apply them here, given the similar height scenario. That, that would just be a request on our part relating to the, the smoke.
What happened? How far is the, the first store?
Yeah, it's right next door. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right. Right, 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 yeah, it's a...
How far is the bank from the nearest strip mall?
Yeah, we're, we're quite, we're quite far away, and then the other thing I would add is, we have no control over people smoking outside. If anybody from Aaron Plaza, as an employee of any of the staff there, smokes, and you smell smoke, we have no control over that. Yeah.
As unfortunate as it can be, walk through any of our apartment complexes?
Sure, sure. No, it would, it's just...
Not smelling cigar smoke.
I think one either loves cigar smoke or hates it, so I think we're just trying to, trying to figure that out. Then, the next issue for us, which is a historical problem for us relating to parking, nothing to do with the bank, trust me, we get it, but we are very paranoid about parking and protecting the, the very limited parking that we have at Aaron Plaza. So thank you so much for the, the fence. I think, couple of questions. If maybe you could just say, approximately, how many people do you anticipate at these sales events?
At the sales events? Again, we don't anticipate more than 10 people in a store at any given point in time, so I think our parking, again, with the turnover that we have at events, is more than sufficient.
Okay, that, that having been said, I think we would greatly appreciate perhaps a sign that suggests, you know, "Please don't park at Aaron Plaza" type of thing. I think certainly Mr. Vigna is aware of an ongoing issue that we've had with other, other properties where we had major parking problems.
That's fine, that's acceptable.
That would be great. Thank you so much. And also, just reiterating that no smoking of the cigars outside, you said that this was not going to have outdoor cigar smoking. Thank you, that's great. We just want to reiterate that. And then, sorry to beat a dead horse, just confirming, the windows that are next to the Aaron Plaza property, where the smoking lounge area is, those are fixed, correct? Okay, got it. Just, once for all, I want to make that straight. And then, I guess the only other thing would be, I understand the necessity for the 3-foot part of the fence, understanding site triangle easements, and, and, you know, trying to make sure that there's proper visibility for entering and exiting the property. If, if you could see your way to, going from 3 to 5, we would greatly appreciate that, just for the board's consideration. But I, I think, other than that, thank you very much for all of your accommodations and your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just my comment on the fence being 5 feet there, there would be no visibility while you're trying to exit. I think it would just pose a little bit of a difficult, so I think at 3 feet, we're, we're at a... Right. Right.
3 feet being, staying consistent, then 4 feet going to 5?
We'll take it under advisement. Thank you.
Well, I guess the, the, the question is, I'm not sure if, if Ms. Wa, Mrs. Westlake was asking you to take it under advisement, or was asking the board, or was asking the board if we would, if we would say that once you get at the site triangle, instead of going to 4 feet, we'd like it to go to 5 feet? So in a front yard area, our ordinance only allows a solid fence up to 4 feet, but if we thought, you know, that, that's a variance that we, you know, I mean, is that a variance that, that out of necessity, could we decide we want that to be, to be 5 feet now? They, they didn't advertise for that variance. I mean, that's...
Did you put the catch-all?
I have the, that omnibus language about any of the...
Put the catch-all language?
I did, indeed.
Is in there?
You can do it, as long as it's not in traffic.
Okay, because if we believed that it would be to the benefit of the neighboring property, so then, if we decided, if we voted favorably, once they got to the site triangle, the fence could go up to 5 feet because they have the general language to cover the variance.
Yes.
I just want, I, I don't know if I, it's a question or clarification. When you say no one can smoke, or people don't smoke outside of your building, it's because you don't have an outside area. However, if someone decides, as they walk outside, to smoke, you have no control over that, correct? I mean, so...
That's correct.
I'm just trying to make a clarification, because you're, you know, like you were saying, "Oh, you know, thank you for not having people smoke outside," but that isn't always 100% controlled.
No, and you're absolutely right, and that's why I asked the question before about promoting smoking outside, even without the seats.
Right.
Just sort of making it, we can't prevent it, but we don't want to promote it, encourage it, in that sense, knowing, being good neighbors, acknowledging our promises before the board, et cetera.
Your cameras are not only inside, they're in the parking lot, correct?
What happened?
The cameras are in the parking lot as well. Do you have cameras outside?
Yes, we'll have cameras. Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Because we have a dispensary in town.
Right.
And obviously, do not promote, even, they don't want you going to your car.
Right.
And bling fire, you know, smoke.
Right, 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 right.
So if they see that you're doing it on the camera, they will come out, the security guards will come out.
Right, of course, yeah.
So I'd imagine if the guys at the work are showing up, get a couple cigars, and they're sitting around the pickup truck, smoking a cigar, you'll ask them to kindly leave.
Right.
I just have one question. What, what is the, the thought with the lighting around, in and around the space?
We're maintaining the bank lighting, Ms. Hodgson.
Yeah, at this time, just bank lighting.
Okay.
If I could just jump in on that?
Sure.
We would like to have some sort of confirmation that that existing lighting is sufficient, right? I think, I think I might have heard that we would get some foot candle levels to confirm that, because we're asking for a lighting plan.
Yeah, Jim, we could do that. So Sharif, we would need to put a foot candle plan together for the lighting to make sure it's sufficient? You can do that?
And also, keep in mind, it's a 24-hour operation now, so...
Yeah.
If someone pulls into the parking lot, or is it censored? I don't know how that would work, but if someone comes in, if someone gets off shift at 2:00 AM and wants to come and have a cigar there?
The, the streetlights are on. There's, there's lampposts on the property that are constantly on throughout the night, and then...
Light up every spot that someone could park in?
Yeah, it's, yeah, and then with the landscaping that we're doing.
They won't light up the spot, you're being facetious. The chairman was being facetious, his streetlight's not going to light up the parking spaces behind the building, but at 2 o'clock in the morning, you've got 5 or 6 spaces up front, right?
Right.
So you wouldn't expect anybody to be behind a building at that hour?
No.
Right.
And there's also inbuilt lighting within the bank facade on the outside, under the, the, under the awning, yes.
Is your signage lit?
Well, our outdoor signage will be lit.
I don't remember what the bank, the freestanding sign that's outside, is that lit up as well, or, because I don't...
I don't recall off the top of my head, but we'll be redoing the signage anyway, and it will be lit, so...
So the signage on, that you put on the building itself, that will be lit?
Mm-hmm.
Will that stay lit, or that will go off at a certain time?
Yeah, it'll stay lit.
It'll stay lit?
Yes, yeah.
If, if, just on the signage, on the, on the monument sign? You mean the freestanding sign?
No, the building.
No, I understand, I know that, but the question before was about...
Yes.
The freestanding sign.
Yes.
If, if, right now, it's a pre-existing variance because of its location, Jim, I believe you called that out. If it's, if it's not lit and lighting requires a variance, we need to mention that now, so, and I don't know if a lit, lighted sign, on a monument sign requires a variance, otherwise we're coming back before the board.
Yeah. I thought I saw somewhere where it said the sign was currently lit, and, and they would continue to use it.
Okay.
But we need to confirm that.
Yeah, the detail just says, "See detail by others," but there's nothing in here for the sign.
I remember it was like on the ground.
So basically, do you leave, at your other locations that are 24/7, is there always a sign on?
Yes.
Right, there's always an illuminated sign.
Yeah.
It would be on the building?
Right.
It's not going to be on the road?
No.
2:00 AM bright?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else for the public who'd like to be heard? We got a fence, 5 feet.[1675.74]
Apologies, I did actually have one more question. Can you just tell us how you monitor the middle-of-the-night people? I understand you have video surveillance, but you're not up all night watching them. And the concern would be, I guess, the lone idiot that drinks a little too much at 2:00 in the morning. So can you sort of describe how you, like, your process for monitoring? Because you said you monitored it before.
So, no, I'm not staying up at all hours of the night watching people smoke and drink. What we do do is, we do review footage periodically. And if, the other thing is, most of our members all know each other or get to know each other. And they tend to be people who have known us for years and years just because of where we've operated in the area, in Mercer County and Milnessex County. A lot of our customers are also cops. So we have, we have a fair good of knowledge that the majority of our customers are not driving home drunk or doing anything stupid, just because if they do do that and we hear about it, their access is revoked. And that's what, that's the action we take for all customers. Same thing when you go into a bar. You can drink as much as you want. You go into a bar, you come out. If you're inebriated and you get pulled over, you do something dumb.
Sharag, just as far as the members that we're talking about, what's the age demographic? What's the average age of a member?
Yeah, the average age is 40 and up. I mean, I would even say it's higher. I don't know about many of you, but from my experience and from what I've seen, most people are not pounding bottles of liquor at that age. And we don't usually see people walking out of our lounges drunk. So, and this is something that we've maintained and we continue to watch and maintain. And I will do so over here as well. So I don't think that will be a problem.
Thank you.
Just a couple more, Mr. Chairman, a couple more questions. So we have a few sections in our report. I think, you know, most of it's been covered. You indicated you wouldn't have an issue complying with the report. We haven't really talked about some of the grading, drainage, stormwater comments or landscaping. Not that we have to get into it in great detail, but, you know, there are, there is some additional information that's being requested in those comments that we just want to make sure that you're okay with.
Sure.
Where we're looking for, you know, downspout and roof leader locations, where we're looking for, you know, any limits of disturbance to make sure that we don't need soil conservation plans.
Correct, which we don't think we will, but, yep.
You know, I just want to make sure that we have all that. I think I heard you say that you are actually reducing the impervious on-site.
Think by like 300 square feet, something along those lines?
Okay. Because we're looking to confirm that there's no change in peak runoff on the site. And also, there's a few inlets out there that may need to be brought up to current compliance with the heads and the grates. And so we want to make sure that you'll be able to do that.
All acceptable, Jim, yes.
Yeah. As well as provide the additional grading information that we need just to confirm that everything's going to be able to flow.
It'll be on the revised plans, absolutely.
And the landscaping, there's a few islands that it says, you know, we're going to landscape here, but it's short on details. So we're going to need to see what you really intend to put in there.
Some landscaping details with specifics.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Acceptable, all of them.
Okay, so that all, then that takes care of my concerns.
Carol Passamath, again, from the Environmental Commission.
Yes.
I was hearing about the side, oh, that's the chain link fence between Aaron Plaza and the cigar place. And then, did I hear mention of a six-foot vinyl fence somewhere?
Sharif, you mentioned the six-foot vinyl fence. Yes, that's on, that's to the rear, correct?
And is that fence there now?
Yes. That's not proposed. That's there. The six, it's only three feet?
No, the one in the back, I did speak of that.
Lean into the microphone.
It's three feet high.
It's three feet?
Yeah, it's a split rail fence.
The split rail fence is three feet?
Yes, that's for protection of wetlands and wooded area.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
As long as it's not a six-foot-high line?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moved.
Any discussion? No? Do you have a closing?
No, no, the board's heard more than enough testimony tonight. I just respectfully request that the board approve the application, along with the conditions and the statements on the record. Thank you for your time.
At this point, I ask for a motion to approve the nod's application. Anyone? Anyone?
If nobody else wants to make a motion, I'll make it. I move that we approve the site plan application, subject to compliance with all of the items pointed out in the CME memo and particularly, you know, resolving issues related to the calculations for runoff, adequacy of lighting, and, you know, if the board so desires, I would be in favor of the fence going up to be five feet high once you're out of the site triangle, along at one side of the building. I don't think there were any other conditions that we discussed.
Lighting edge for lighting?
Lighting, I mentioned lighting and storm, satisfying CME with...
No mail order out of the facility? No parking sign? No parking at Aaron Plaza? That sign as well? That was recommended by Ms. Westlake?
Can you lean into the mic?
I'm sorry, Ms. Westlake. As Mr. Westlake requested and we acquiesced, the sign indicating no parking at Aaron Plaza.